No, not you.
It makes me look younger.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in from closed session. Mr. Benhausen, sir. Thank you, sir. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start the 6:00 PM. And it's approximately by Mr. Mickey Mouse up there on the wall, it's approximately 6:20 that we're starting. Would everybody please make sure that your cellphones are on vibrate or silent or turned off? And would everybody, oh, before we do that, Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call?
Councilmember Lusinovich?
Here.
Paris?
Here.
Smith?
Yes, here.
Mayor Potemstump?
Here.
Mayor McGuire?
Here.
Also, any voting that needs to go on will be all roll call voting tonight. Because Councilman Smith is out of area, we said it earlier. He's in Texas, and it was posted on the agenda, and it's posted where he's at. So would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance and invocation?
You want the honors?
Swoop the flag and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. We ask that the Holy Spirit would touch each and every heart and soul tonight. Let the decisions made in these chambers be your decisions for the city, for the people of the city, for the glory of your kingdom and in your grace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we've done the roll call and we're back in business. Do we need, we don't need, we've already got that done, meeting's called to order. City Clerk reports, then you like communications.
Yes, Mayor, these are from J.M. Powers. The first is dated July 14th. TDS expenses are eighty-nine percent subsidized by the general fund at over 1.0, sorry, 1.058 million per year. Next one is dated July 15th. Water standby fees engineers report by aero engineering lacks full compliance with government code 54984 and copied contacts from the prior engineer's report. And the third one, July 16th. Nineteen twenty strategy for funding water sewer and recycled water master plan studies and reports.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Presentation, City Treasurer, Middleton?
Welcome, Councilman Smith. Good afternoon, council staff and our citizens. I would like to make a mention that just like I overlook all of the checks that we write and try to verify their integrity, people overlook what I write. And I made a mistake on the investment report. I failed to update the beginning balance for last June. We had a $10,267 interest gain for that month, and it didn't show up on the report that's in the agenda. But we're good now, the actual amount as of the end of June was $4,189,311 versus the reported $4,179,044. So I apologize for the mistake on the report. Other than that, we don't have any more to report for good interest earned. This month, we'll have the interest earned from life. And our current, our balance as of thirty-first of the month was $17,858,390, including our interest earning accounts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Civic community organizations and announcements?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. Wanted to invite everybody out to our Red Cross blood drive. Our blood is in short supply in the summer months in California. A lot of people go on vacation and they have a critical shortage. So we decided to help them out and do a blood drive on August 1st. And it's gonna be at the Arts and Community Center, starting at 1:00 PM and going till, which I like to get everybody in around seven, but they'll be open until nine. Also, I want to remind everybody that our pool is open daily, Tuesday through Saturday. We open at 1:00 PM. We also have night swim on Thursday nights at 6:00 PM. The kids are going back to school pretty early this year on August 7th. So during that time, we're gonna stop our daily one o'clock opening on August 11th. And then we have an adult exercise class that also has lap swim for the adults on Tuesday, Wednesday, Fridays at 10:30. And you can take advantage of the whole month for $25. If you have questions about the pool, their number over there is the 760-373-8004. And I also wanted to invite all the golfers out to Tierra del Sol. We are opening at 6:00 AM to beat the heat, so come on out, we open early. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public or civic organization? Yes, sir. Is your radio, or your radio, God.
Hello? Good evening, council, staff, members of the public. I'd just like to remind everyone that our budget workshops will begin tomorrow in council chambers from 5 to 8. Will continue on Thursday as well from 5 to 8, and on Friday from 1 to 4.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Hearing none, going to consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion if no member of the council, staff, or public wishes to comment or ask questions. Public comments to please be limited to three minutes, roll call vote is required. CC1, approved, city check registry dated through 7/18/19. CC2, minutes dated 7/9/19, wave reading of subject minutes, approved as written and order filed. CC3, adopt resolution number 7/192795 of the City Council of the City of California City, setting the rate of the public safety only parcel, special parcel tax for fiscal year nineteen twenty, or nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and requesting collection services from the county. CC4, adopt resolution numbers 7/192796 of the City Council of the City of California City, authorizing the filing of an application for regional surface transportation program, which is RSTP program, funding and committing the necessary local match and stating the assurance to complete the project. CC5, adopt a resolution 7/192797 of the City Council of the City of California, approving a denial for industrial disability retirement. CC6, adopt resolution number 7/192798 of the City Council of the City of California City, authorizing the filing of an application for congestion mitigation and air quality CMAC program funding and committing the necessary local match and stating the assurance to complete the project. CC7, approval of environmental preferable purchasing policy. And CC8, monthly department updates and reports received and filed. Does anybody need anything pulled from CC, from consent calendar 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, or 8 for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Please pull CC3 for discussion.
Okay, pulling CC3 for discussion. And that's dealing with the parcel tax? Any, anyone else appear need anything pulled? Well, we'll do that, but I mean, any of the other ones need to be pulled? Do you have any, okay, sir? Sir? Councilman Smith, do you have any other ones that need to be pulled?
Uh, no, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That being said, anybody has any questions in reference to CC1 through 8? CC3 is gonna be pulled and discussed separately.
Jim Creighton, California City. I had asked the city clerk to provide you guys with a cheat sheet. I have comments on CC4 through 8 and questions. I'm gonna talk real fast, because three minutes is probably not enough. And then I'm just gonna sit down. I'd like questions, I'd like answers to everything where there's a question mark. So on CC4, minimum required match is 11.47%. The match proposed by the city is almost 30%. When is the city required to put up their matching funds? Again, we don't have a, we don't have a budget. What is, what is Fund 273359 in the current balance? We've always had that in the past. We've always been told what the balance of the current funding are. Is BHT's estimate in today's dollars? If construction doesn't occur until FY '21, '22, two years from now, the city is on the hook for any construction increases. On CC5, why is a resolution even necessary? Why doesn't he simply pull his disability application and be done with it? Why does the council have to acknowledge that his disability application was denied? Nah, let me finish, please, sir. Denied by CalPERS when it's already on record at CalPERS that it was denied. If there is a statute or ordinance that requires this resolution, then please cite it for us. If not, then it shouldn't even be on the, on the agenda, in my opinion. CC6, again, as in CC4, I ask, when is the match required and what is the current balance in Fund 273359? Why is type A hot mix asphalt called out on this project and type B hot mix asphalt is called out on Hacienda Road Project, CC4? Type A is more stable in the long run than type B. I have attached on the back of your cheat sheets a technical report from Granite, which explains the difference between type A and type B. CC7, you state a positive impact on our environment by helping to reduce landfill waste when in actuality, the same amount of paper will still be entering the landfill, either as recycling or trash. The city will still continue to print reams and reams of paper monthly for council, commission, and other meetings. Why not go a step further and stop printing and start using those gray things in front of you called laptops, other than paperweights, and start taking them home and doing your work on there like I've been doing for three years? CC8, where are the updates from Public Works, police, Parks and Rec, et cetera? All departments have the same amount of time to prepare and only fire, finance, and HR provided updates. Thank you very much.
Do you have a copy of this? Okay.
Good evening, Al Hudson. Start off with the check registry, check 105798. That's to Andy Heath for $8,875. I have made various public records requests for the contract with Andy Heath, and it has not been forthcoming. I don't believe that the city clerk has one or there's one in existence. So what I did is I went on, we went online, and we got a copy of the contract Andy Heath has with the City of Auburn. And there, Andy Heath has a maximum of $140,000. We paid him darn near $80,000 here since he's been working for the city periodically. There's a cap in Auburn. And there's a condition that he's gonna do the work up in Auburn at a higher standard and compliance with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. That leaves quite a bit to be desired here. And also on page four of his contract with the City of Auburn, it's the ownership of written products. All reports, documents, or other written material, written products are developed by the consultant, the performance of this agreement shall be and remain the property of the city without restriction or limitation or use of dissemination. So everything that he does or has done is available, has to be available to the council and members of the public without reservation or restriction. And his check should be pulled until he provides the information and analysis that he has done. Now, moving on, check number 105810. That's to Verizon for Public Works cellphones in the amount of $2,359.75. How many cellphones does the, does Public Works have that justifies that amount? Because other departments, I've never seen this with other departments. It doesn't make sense to me. And finally, the CC7, on the purchasing, on the purchasing policy, that should be under the jurisdiction of the city manager. She should be setting those policies, not a department head. And I think that it should be internal controls put in place. But I mean by that, there should be sequential purchase orders issued to each department.
Excuse me, Mayor, time?
Can, can be tracked and coordinated with the amounts of money and the services being purchased and goods being purchased so that they can be matched up and coordinated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's Andy Heath stuff?
If you could give it to the city clerk and she can get us copies. Anybody else? Any other questions? Hearing none, coming up here. Council, I'll talk to the new kid on the block, Councilman Smith.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions dealing with the check registry or any other items?
No, I'll let others ask those on that.
Okay.
Until we, until we get to CC3.
Okay, sir.
All of a sudden, and I guess this will go to the chief. I was of the understanding that uniform allowances, the $600 uniform allowances were for a police officer only. Now I'm seeing uniform allowances for all the city employees at $600 apiece. Has there been a change? Why are we all of a sudden providing uniform allowances for all the employees?
It's for, per the MOU, non-sworn personnel get a one-time uniform allowance at the beginning of the fiscal year of $600. All sworn personnel will get two dispersments, one in December and one in June, totaling $1,200. Any new employees will receive a one-time upfront of $750 for a uniform allowance when they start.
My next question would be, we provide uniforms for, I saw academy uniforms, so that when they go to the academy, they have a separate uniform? And then what happens, you know, I'm of the understanding that one of our candidates quit after three weeks. Is that correct?
The person that was going to the academy did not complete the academy, and those are issued equipment, so it's city's property.
You know, counsel, I think it's time that we either do contracts or something that will keep these employees engaged. We're spending a lot of money to send these people to academies, uniform allowances, just a lot of monies being spent, and then they up and quit on us, and they, we have no recourse.
Could you bring that up during council agenda?
Absolutely.
So we can, yeah, so we can get that scabbed or rolled in.
Okay, I can do that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I have too many, but I'll pass it, I'll pass the mic at this time.
Sir? Sir?
I have to recuse myself on check number 105911. I just, you know, looking at this, we get the same old thing. We are at a time where this budget is gonna be tough. And, you know, you look through the register and you see things that shouldn't be in there. And, you know, every, everyone who works for the city, we need to be more frugal with our money. We really do. We want to exist as a city, we want to be financially viable. And so everybody needs to watch the amount of money that they spend. That's all, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other questions that might have been answered prior to.
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I can't seem to find it here, but we have a, a check for towing of a police vehicle. It was $387.
It was $350 from, I don't know where it was towed to. Yeah, I saw that one.
Yeah, it, okay. Do you have any information on that, chief? Find it here.
That one would be for the, the old animal control truck. It wasn't running. It was, nobody local could work on it. Keefen Sons, the next place, obviously closed up. So we went to, got towed to AB Ford. And the cost, in my opinion, is a little prohibitive right now. So we just, we're having to tow it back.
Jay towings, recovering to the auto mall, so, oh, we were gonna put a new engine in that? Is that my understanding?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna try to get it up and running, and they said that we need a new engine and. Nah, I don't want to spend the money right now.
Good answer. Okay. Thank you, that's what I needed to know.
Anything else? Okay, looking for, we're gonna look for approval with one vote for CS, or CC1, CC2, CC4, CC5, CC6, CC7, and CC8. CC3 will be discussed after this vote. Looking for a motion to approve.
Make that, make that motion.
First by Councilman Lusinovich. Looking for a sec. Second by Councilman Smith. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Excuse me, Councilmember Lusinovich?
Aye.
Paris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Potemstump?
Yes, except recusing myself from 105911.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we're now gonna be going to CC3, which is the special tax, or the special parcel tax for FY '19 and '20. Since you pulled that, sir, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is a very important subject, maybe one of the most important subjects for our community. But about a year ago, the citizens were told that this was gonna be dropped to 153 after it was voted in. And I really think that to really, to regain trust from our citizens, it should be given what was told a year ago, and should be at 153.
And is that it, it, sir?
Well, I think that's, if anybody else wants to discuss that before, before making a motion, but I think that's at least opened things up for discussion.
Anybody having, anybody have a discussion? You, go ahead. Well? Do we have to go public first, or can we discuss first and then kick it out to the public, or? Okay, any, anything from the public?
Come on, get up.
I really wanted to hear the discussion, but I'll comply with your protocol. DJ Tuig, representing MyCalCity.org. Just a little background and history. For the past seven years, I've been associated with the Kern County Taxpurs Association as a board of director. Been in dialogue with Howard Jarvis Taxpurs Association, the legal team, et cetera. Trying to come up with information and background that could benefit the city in terms of more effective policies. In my analysis, my own personal analysis, having read the law that were written, including several tax laws, we believe that a parcel tax is designed for a special project. And that's a good purpose for a parcel tax. A library, a school, not for personnel. It's not tied to a general tax. It's based upon mere ownership of a parcel. And therefore, it could never be a fair tax. As a result, we have the most regressive parcel tax in state history. We have the most destructive parcel tax, having lost hundreds of millions of dollars of property value. And the most excessive parcel tax in state history. It's a failed policy. I don't believe that we're planning for success. We're failing to plan, and we're planning to fail. Bracing for impact again and again and again. Lies, lies, and more lies. Three times for emphasis. Lies about efficiency studies, lies about capping the rate, campaign lies about building a general tax base now. I can't support the parcel tax because it's not for a special project. I believe the more appropriate, effective policy is to get off the parcel tax, to build the general tax base, to have planning and community development be effective, be priority number one, to have economic development in the city. As long as we're on this heroin of a parcel tax, we're never gonna get off of it. You keep pumping heroin into somebody, they're gonna get hooked. It's time to reduce the parcel tax. I'd like to see more government controls. I'd like to see a metrics of economic development procedures and strategic plans. I'd like to see measurements of success and accountability. And finally, I'd like to see a vision for the city that we can all adopt, we can all promote, and we can all get behind. This is not it. While engineers are paid a fortune, the city attorney's office is paid a fortune, personnel and overtime is excessive, there are no controls. Get off the slush fund. Let's start to tie our revenues to a general tax. It'll be more sustainable in the long run, and you'll build trust. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Rick Warren, there was also other promises, you know, department audits. It was something that was discussed. that was discussed all the way back to 2016, five-year plans, performance audits on each department to find out wants and needs, and what the true costs are. To be honest with you, the parcel tax is just a blank check, allows them to just keep spending all the, all that's needed for whatever. All I have been watching since that has passed is spend, 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 buy this, buy that, nobody's actually auditing the departments to verify their use, their actual needs. At this point, we have not seen any responsibility from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again, Al Hudson. This item needs to be pulled, is what it needs to be, what needs to be happened, or happening with it. The reason it needs to be pulled because it is totally and completely incorrect. There are funds that were not reported in here, that are required to be reported in the calculation. The dollar amount that is shown for cannabis, for the cannabis tax of $8,874, that only represents a single cultivator with a, well, 1,200 square, 1,200 square feet of cultivation space. It's not correct. Also, the, the other cannabis, although, there's, this is the tax that was assessed on only a single cultivator, not the multiple ones that it, that it should be. Also, the estimated sales and use taxes grossly underestimated in here, in here, in the budget, it's 360, 345,000, and we've got 299,000. All of this equals the necessity of a, of this being pulled and everything being recalculated because you cannot get there and send wrongly calculated taxes to the public. We were promised reductions, and this is plain and simply a sad joke on the public. Please pull it and do the recalculation of it. I have everything right here that I will give to the city clerk that has the correct calculations, so please pull it.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeanne O'Lofflin, California City. I have several concerns with this. One is the amount of tax that was collected. I remember Mayor McGuire, at your first meeting, you made the comment that we just collected $16,000. Now, perhaps that was the annual. This does not make sense. I know we have at least two cultivations in town. This 8474 says that we only have 1,210 square feet of canopy, and I believe that is incorrect. So I'm concerned that everything isn't in here, maybe taxes haven't been collected, I don't know. The other thing is, there's also a non-cannabis tax of 7,022, according to the financials, that was not included in this calculation, that should be. Then when I went down and looked at the calculation, it came out to be .0024 cents per day, and so the recommendation was zero. Well, if you add the other $7,022 and take the 90%, the total, rather than 50,670, sorry, would be 55,984. To me, keep it simple, take the dollar amount, divide it by the parcels, that should reduce it 99 cents and some change. We told the public when this was passed that we would reduce this, and I don't care if it is just a dollar, I think that we owe that to the public to show that we are doing that. But I really think someone needs to look deep into this because these numbers don't seem reasonable for the numbers of businesses that we have in town that have been operating and should have been paying taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bringing it back up here. Sir?
Yes, Mayor, so, it appears that the numbers are wrong. I agree with Ms. O'Lofflin that we need to do something. 99 cents is something, but at this time, I'd like to reduce it at least $10 and make it 172.50, just to show the public that we need to get our numbers right, but we also need, we're at a time constraint to where we have to get this to the county, and if we're out of time, then let's send it at 172.50, and do our due diligence and find out what went wrong here.
The message that was brought to me at the council meeting on Saturday is overwhelming, and that is that this is the end of the special tax. I don't think it's the end of the special tax, but it, it has grown too large to be sustainable in the form that it's in now. The promise that I understood came from the council when this was approved was that it would be reduced to $153 immediately upon being brought for the second year. Now, personally, that's, that's what I would like to do. As far as what has economically happened from the new industry in town, I think it's immaterial. I think the promise was that we would reduce it, that it was, it shouldn't have been this high in the first place, so I feel much more comfortable with 153. But it has to be reduced, irrespective. That's the path we're on.
I believe, I believe Councilman Smith said he wanted it at 153 at the beginning, but, yeah, he can...
Yes, indeed, that's what, that's what the citizens were told more than a year ago. There was absolutely no organized opposition to the special tax because of that promise. And, and I, I believe it would do a great service. This has been a year, my, hand in hand with this, if there are cannabis taxes out there, why have they not been, why have they not been collected? And if so, who is responsible to collect them? It's not fair for the citizens to pay if indeed, if indeed that there are taxes that could have been collected that would reduce this, but that is, as, as Councilman Lysinovich said, that is immaterial because we were promised 153. I don't want to cut off discussion, but I would like to, to make a motion that we would lower the special tax to 153 as promised more than a year ago.
I'd second that motion.
But can I have discussion?
Now you can have, you can continue the discussion.
So can you hold your motion?
The motion can be there, we'll discuss, and then, since it's been... So go ahead and discuss.
Okay. Previously, I said 153. I was overruled, and we went to 182.50. After we came back, I said 153, and it's been 182.50. Listening to Councilman Smith, and listening to Councilman Lysinovich, and people here, I, you know, I, I think we need more revenue than 153, however, that is a promise that I made a year and something ago, so I will have to go with 153. Now, going to 153, all of you need to realize that it's going to be a tight budget because a lot of things are overstated and understated, if you understand those accounting terms. I went through, just, I looked at the financials from June, and I looked at the budget, and the budget that we were sent, and just looking at the financials from June, we are way under overtime, just looking at overtime. Overtime alone, if you look at just fire, and I'm not trying to throw fire underneath the bus, so I'm not trying to throw you underneath the bus, but, but the, but the overtime there is, is, like of a million-dollar budget, there's an additional 400,000 in overtime. And then, you know, so we really have to come up with clever ways to reduce the amount of money that we are spending. We are a city that has enough to do what we need to do, but everybody needs to cooperate and, and cut pennies and dollars wherever we can, so that we can have a viable police department, a viable fire department, public works, every department can work, but, you know, it's like, in the military, we go, we deploy and go places, and you get MREs, which are meals ready to eat, they're a green package of stuff that we eat. Anyway, each person is given one MRE for a meal, and you might get three, and you might get four a day. Some people want five or six a day, but we're at a time now where we are kind of at war, and we need to eat just what we're given, and not anymore. So everybody needs to tighten their belts and the, the extra things, instead of getting that nice, you know, Dodge Ram Hemi with the fancy truck, everybody can get a little bitty white little car like I drive that, that gets you from A to B, you know, and not knocking any, not knocking the mayor, but I'm just saying that...
Here comes the bus again.
No, no, no bus, just a little bitty car. But what I'm saying is, seriously, is that we really need to look into the budget and make sure that there are no things that are overstated or understated, that everything, because if you make a mistake one in one place, like say you say that it's short, and, and you understate it, well, somewhere else is going to be wrong also, so you, you know, you're going to have two things wrong rather than just one. And so, again, I applaud the city workers, like the city manager and the finance director, coming up with a budget, but also, at the same time, they're going through an audit. So they're doing a lot of things at one time, and we just need to, just, once the audit is done, go through that budget and cut it more and more, so we can give the citizens a reduction in the amount of parcel tax. And as the gentleman over there stated, both of them, there are people out there who have not paid their taxes, and we need to go and collect those taxes from them. I was in City Hall once, and I think it was Brad Miller's group, they were coming in, paying their taxes, but everybody needs to go and come in and pay their taxes, or we need to go after them and make them come in, and if they haven't paid, maybe assess them a, a fine or something. But everybody needs, just like if you're late with your water bill, before my wife started coming in and paying it, I would, I had about two or three times where I had to pay a penalty, and I said, "I'm late? I paid it on the 10th. Well, should have paid it on the 9th." But we've changed that now. But what I'm saying is, anybody who owes taxes in the cannabis industry needs to come in and pay, and all of us in the city who work, because we work for the city also, all of us need to be as frugal as we can to make it so that we can cut it down to 153 and, and live with the budget we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
80.22% voted for the 1, what was it, 182.50? And that's what they chose, no matter whatever anybody's opinion is, the fact is, is that the voters voted for this. I do believe that it needs to come down a little bit, but I think 153 is, in my opinion, is too much. I agree with Councilman Paris of the 172.50, for the first year, take $10 off. I think that's, that's a good show of faith to the public that we're trying, and we've got budget coming up, and I want to make sure that all are, that we're, we're covered, and we're not cutting our nose off spider face. So that is, that is just my concern. I think, I think if we lowered it $10, I think we'd be good. But there is a motion.
Do a second call?
Do a second call? Yeah, this is a little, this is a little controversial on this one, so we'll do a second.
Mayor, may I approach with some document real quick?
Could you give it to the city clerk, please?
Why don't we put our efforts into improving business environment, planning and development, and improve the general tax? That's what our focus should be. If the government would put as much focus into attracting business as they did into passing this failed policy, we would be able to reduce the parcel tax much faster. Our entire focus needs to be, the number one priority of the city is to sustain our services through the improvement of the economy of California City, effective planning and effective community development, and if that is not our focus, we are going to fail. We're going to fail to attract people, we're going to fail to continue to attract property owners, our property is barely marketable today. Hundreds of properties receive no bids for $250, hundreds and hundreds establishing the value of property in California City. I implore you to do everything necessary to grow the general tax base to sustain services. Thank you for your time.
Question, I have, DJ, do you mind?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
General fund tax, is that what you said?
General tax, general property tax.
And that, that's, that, that goes without, that, that's also subject to a vote?
General property tax is what we receive from the properties in California City, the 1% of value is taxed, and the tax split with the county is the county gets a majority of that, and we get the minority of the tax splits. But that's how you pay for public safety, you tie it to your general tax. So if you have, for example, a $5 billion value, we could support our services. Because our value continues to plunder, we've lost the ability to attract people to buy our property, and that's why we're having a lower value, and that's why we have a lower tax than normal communities that sustain services on a general tax. Today, the parcel tax is six times the general tax, not one times, not two times, six times. It's a problem. And so your dependency at 150, even 100, was too much. To have a conversation about 182 on this two-quarter gimmick is just out of control. I would recommend at least reduce it to 153. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Val Cal City. Something just came to mind, who is collecting the tax?
For?
From cannabis. Who is collecting it?
City is.
Who? Who's assigned to collect it?
Finance.
Who's assigned to send the letter out, and say you owe $22,000 for last month or whatever? We just don't seem to get it yet, that you have to have people doing those jobs, those positions need to be filled with people who say, a guy says, "I send a letter out, and the letter states that you owe taxes. You can either pay them, or like Councilman Sum said, you get fined, extra money, like IRS, what, what's the difference?" You know, let's get it done.
Rick Warren, a different point of view. If you think about it, we have all these vacant lots that need to be... If you think about it, we have all these vacant lots that need to be developed, but we'd rather charge $15 to ride all over the place, and collect the $183, $182 from the landowners that can't develop it because of the motorcycle riders. What we are doing is we're stabbing ourselves in the foot by allowing this program to continue. This should be, we have property, the city has property, it should be put there. We should leave it to private owners of properties or businesses to do their business, to draw their own income into that. But, the $15 per motorcycle rider, which prevents you from developing your lot, which after a while, you get tired of paying the extra taxes, and you let it go to get taken back by the state for a tax default. So, you know, you can either make, in five years, they take it back. You can either make that extra $1,000, or the extra, you know, if you think about it, that's 75 bucks. Your choice. You need to really plan what happens in the future for this property. You can make more off of that lot if it was developed by a general tax, what DJ was talking about, than riding motorcycles. You need to make a decision in the future of what the plan is for the city. What is the best for the city? Outsiders or the locals? Thank you.
Thank you.
She's a little old guy. Al Hudson. Little history lesson. When the special tax was debated by the council and presented and discussed by the public, there was a break in the discussion that was given to give the, to give the city attorney time to draft it. And while he was in the process of drafting, drafting it for the 153, it was changed to 183 without public discussion. Think about it. Councilman Stump, you are here, all that, don't you? So, we need to give the public what was promised, not what was modified, without substantial public input. The purpose is laudable. Police and fire need to be funded, but we don't need to be excessively taxed. Spending needs to be reined in on police and fire. There are some excesses, admittedly, but they're doing the best they have with what they have, but it still needs to be reined in, and the public needs to be taxed at the rate that they initially agreed to, not what was modified. Thank you.
Lou Peralta, California City. I wasn't gonna talk about this, because I think we had, we're getting close to a decision, but I do remember that we voted 18250 on the premise that it was going to be reduced as soon as possible to 150, 15350. That's what I can remember. I don't remember a whole lot of things lately, but I can remember that. Wasn't gonna say anything until the $15 came up for the OHSVs. My gosh. It's really incredible that certain people here don't understand economics. We used to bring 2,000, 3,000 people a weekend here, and they would spend the money not only out in the desert, but also in town. I have proof of that. That's my job, that's my business. This year alone, we brought in a lot of people ourselves in our own promotions. I guarantee you that every weekend that we have an event, the hotel is filled up, and restaurants notice the difference. To complain about the $15, people not being able to sell their lots is ludicrous. I invite you to come along with me on my buggy, if you like, and I'll take you to where all the trails are. And if somebody indeed wanted to, to sell their lot, or get her prepared to sell, I can show you what happens when you fence that property in, or you stake it out, you say, "Keep out." Nobody goes in it. There's plenty of room for these people to, to run and enjoy our desert. To use as an excuse is just ludicrous. It just doesn't make any sense, because it doesn't address the fact that we need a lot more than just getting rid of the OHSVs, who, by the way, help our economy. We need infrastructure. We need people to desire to build, and that, the only way you can do it is doing it by you folks, by our city manager, by our promotions person, whoever, to promote this city for something better than what we have now. And if you don't do that, nobody's gonna come. They're gonna come to ride their bikes, and motorcycles, and ATVs, and UTVs, and enjoy themselves, and spend the money in the city.
Time, Mayor.
So, to use that as an excuse, Mayor, and City Council, I think is not very smart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanie O'Laughlin. So, if you take the 150 of the tax the prior year to 180, that's a little over 20% increase, and the budget has swelled more than 20% over this last year. If you cut down from the 182 to the 153, it's roughly 1.5 million, but I do think that we should go back to living within our means, and I think if we were doing that before, we can certainly make it happen again.
A lot of complaint about new businesses not coming to town and trying to make a way, but I say, in the past, new businesses come to City Hall, and the people that were in in that time, they spent about 10 minutes here, turned their back, and left because of the regulations, the monies, and everything. It just showed them, don't even try. I do believe that the council has to work with the city admin with a view toward attracting people, not turning them away because of the exorbitant fees and the regulations that have been in place in this city. Thank you.
Catherine Everett, California City. Two items, special tax. I was one of those who sold the special tax 16 to 18 hours a day, seven days a week, at 18250, with the understanding that our police department would be funded in such a way that we would be able to hire some additional officers, uniform officers, and admin personnel if necessary. Cutting it back to 17250, I think that $10 will be made up by the cannabis people very quickly, anyway, but $10 is not a problem. Taking it to 153 takes us back, that means Chief Ortado has to consider laying off a couple of officers today, today. Do you remember when Mr. Stockwell brought us the budget and laid off, I think it was 42 people, administrative people as well as police officers and fire, et cetera, et cetera? Everybody went, "Oh, my God, we can't do that." Mr. Sum said, "Oh, no, 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 we can't do that. That's terrible. People got mortgages to pay, et cetera." That's true. You wanna go back to that? That's what'll happen. You can't tell people in this city that we're gonna give you a little bit more police protection, not a lot, but a little bit more, a little bit more fire, maybe, not a lot, but a couple more, and then come back and reneg, and say, "No, we wanna take it back to pre-18250, and you can just go and do whatever you wanna do. Do you wanna bring customer, or do you wanna bring business into this town? Learn to say yes, and cut some of the fees that people get." I kid you not, I listened to Dr. O'Laughlin, I listened to Mrs. Writing, and I wanna tell you, I know from experience, this is known as the city that is not inviting business. Like I said Saturday, learn to say yes, and smile, and you say, "Thank you."
Jim Creighton, California City. Quick question. The current budget that we'll be talking about Wednesday and Thursday night is built on the 18222? Needs to be redone?
Kelly Pollock, I was watching this online, and I was seeing that you guys were planning on lowering the budget. I have about probably 20 or so properties in California City that I'm paying special tax on, and I don't think you, it's the time to lower the budget right now. I think the police have been doing a really good job recently. It seems like there's more police force in the area. The fire department, I seen they're more active, and it seems like they're getting stuff done. Just carrying about the $30 or something, I think it's a big mistake when the city seems like it's on a good track right now, that I haven't seen since, I was out here in the 80s, and I haven't seen the good track that they're headed in. And I think you need to think about it before you actually vote on lowering it. I don't think you should vote for that today. I think it'll be a big mistake. You're gonna lose a lot of revenue that could go to a lot of good things.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind you guys that there's a 30% increase that was approved for the payroll for police and fire. Reducing to 153 is a 1.3 million dollar impact, and it's 50/50, so it's no longer 60%. So, the police will have less to work with than they did before at 153. So, just consider the impact.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna, I wanted to ask the chiefs what they'd be looking at.
Yeah, it totally changes the budget for police and fire.
Hi, Carrie Lee, California City. I would caution you to not do a knee-jerk reaction. I understand that we were promised the reduction down to 153. I am a property owner in this city. If we could downgrade in steps and not drop it like a rock, that would be more beneficial, in my opinion.
I'm Keith Middleton, I'm resident city. I don't recall dropping the first year 153. Seemed to me that the whole premise was, every year, we'd look at what we have, and taxes coming in, and we'd lower it based on a formula. Now, this past year, we did not receive the cannabis monies that we expected, or at least we can't see it in the finances as yet. But, it wasn't a $30 drop, it was a percentage drop based on cannabis revenues in. That's the way the tax is written. It's thrown away, throwing out 153, and that's what we said we'd do is not true.
Thank you. We've got a motion on the table.
I'd like some more discussion up here.
Okay, sir.
Listening to our constituents out there, Dr. O'Laughlin said 1.5 million. Cut it in half, we're reducing police and fire by $750,000 if we take it to 153. Listening to our finance director and our city manager, at 1.3 million, we're still reducing it 650,000 per fire and police. We have a fiduciary responsibility to this city. We see what our budget is, and to drop police and fire that amount of monies this next year, or having to pick it up in the general fund, when we have no idea what the general fund will be, is, I feel is absolutely wrong. Do we need to reduce it? Yes, we do. 1.5 million, absolutely not. 1.3 million, absolutely not. So, I'm gonna stay with the 17250, showing that we're willing to drop it $10, find out what the taxes, cannabis business taxes were. We're out of time. We need to do this now to get it to the county, or we're not gonna get any monies. So, you know, we do have a motion on the floor. If you wanna vote on it, that's fine.
Find out if anybody else.
I, you know, I'm the one who stuck with 153, but realistically, looking at the shape that our city is in now, I mean, I made a promise, and I stayed with my promise last time, but again, looking at the budget, I, I, my heart is with the promise I made, but I'm gonna probably have to break my promise, because I'm looking at the amount of money that we have, and we don't have enough. But, there are a couple of things that I asked for, and I have not received them, and I think everybody up here wants it. We asked that this time, we would try and do zero-based budgeting. So, to do zero-based budgeting, we asked for a list of priorities from the directors. I have not seen that list of priorities. And as I said countless times before, I would like to see your number one priority, if, and not to beat up Chief Goodell, but if your number one priority is a fire truck, list that as a fire truck. Your number two priority might be something else, but list all of those things, and we'll look at how much they cost. And what we, what you do is, you list all your priorities, and when you get to the amount of money, revenue over here, if you look at your revenue on the left side, if you're facing it, your revenue over here, and your expenditures over here, debits and credits, and when you run out of money, you run out of money. But, we have to receive a list of priorities from you guys. Otherwise, we're playing the same game that we've played all these years. Now, one thing that Andy Heath showed me, he showed me projections of five years, and those projections have to be there. The first year, this 19 to 20, should show the 20% raises that, that police and fire have gotten, that should be all incorporated in there. But, again, before we do any budget, and what I wanted Director Ibanez to do, is I wanted him not to show you guys any money. I wanted to see your priorities before you saw any money, because you can couch that and say, "Okay, well, I, shoot, I have so many millions of dollars, I'm gonna build my budget on that." No, give us your priorities. Let us know what your priorities are. And I'm for postponing tomorrow for a week, and in that week, I would like to see the priorities of all the directors. I wanna see your priorities, and list them, because how can I, how can we do a budget when we don't know what your priorities are? You have some guy sitting in there with an Excel spreadsheet with all kinds of macros in it, drawing numbers in there. That's not a budget. A budget, tell me what you need. You know, if you, if you're, and you're, all of us have homes that we live in, if our condenser goes out, you know, for our air conditioner, we're gonna go get a new one. That's a high priority to us. Now, if we get rid of our, our sports package for HBO or whatever, that's no big deal. You can get rid of that. But, we have a list of priorities, and we need to see that from the directors. We need to see your priorities, and we need to see them now, because we can look at them and go through the budget and say, "Okay, he asked for this, I don't see it in here. He asked for this, I don't see it in there." We need to see that list of priorities from you. And we really do need to do zero-based budgeting at this time, because for me to change and go against my promise of $153, I wanna see some bending on your parts where I see your priorities. And if I don't see your priorities, I'm not gonna bend. If I don't see any priorities, I'm just gonna say 153, let them live with it. So, you guys need to, need to tell me that you're gonna give us a list of priorities. All the directors need to give us a list of priorities. And if we can get that list of priorities, we can visit, revisit Wednesday, a Wednesday after that, and then we can go through this budget like we should. And also, don't understate or overstate items on the budget. There are some things in there that I looked through, and I said, "This is wrong." Now, one thing that the former city manager did, is he looked at people, and he said, "Okay, from this, this person, part of their time is, we'll attribute it to water, and some of it attributed to sewer, and so that ratio that you come up with should be carried out throughout the budget." Well, it's not. So, there are... So there are a lot of inconsistencies that I saw in there. I had all my paperwork, I left it at work, so I wasn't gonna go back to work and be late for the closed session. So I apologize for that, but I had tons of things and Mr. Cooper is sitting out there. Mr. Cooper gave me a, some financials from last month. I go through those financials and it shows me that in other ones that I have. Do interpolation. Overtime, again, one of my pet peeves, comes over a million dollars. Yet, in next year's budget, I only saw overtime of six hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's understated. So if that's understated, it's gonna make some other things overstated. That's what I saw.
Allow me to respond to that, Councilmember Stump. When we put those forecasts together, it was a conversation with department heads to kinda get an idea. And that that you're saying is not understated, but we kinda, we did have a conversation with those individuals saying, this is how much you're gonna have to work with and this is how much we're gonna allow, from that point of view. That was kind of more of a discussion for the workshops that are coming up, but in terms of what we put in there, has been a discussion with department heads. We have had tense conversations, we've had awkward conversations, but we had very honest and conversations in terms of where the finances are. You will see, tomorrow is a, is a very informative session. I've, I've told every department head that this is not the opportunity to kinda come in and say what you need. This is an opportunity to show the big financial picture for the city and we should kinda just take that tomorrow night and then begin this sort of conversation. But in terms of numbers that are understated, we do have the backup for it. We did speak with department heads, we did say this is what we're gonna do and we did say that if any changes throughout the year, you need to come to council. You cannot kinda hide anything you want in this budget and get it later in the year. You will have the opportunity to come back to council and defend that project or defend that purchase, et cetera.
I hear what you're saying, however, but I, I hear what you're saying, but some of the things don't add up. If you look at the, when did you talk to them about the overtime? How long ago?
Yeah, it was in a week.
Okay. Because if you look at the actuals, which I looked at that Mr. Cooper gave us, if you look at those actuals, the overtime still comes to almost nine hundred thousand dollars for the year if you interpolate.
Can we, can we?
So going, okay, I'll move back to here. So I, I have to, based on that, I'm gonna have to break my promise because we don't have the money and go with the recommendation that Councilman Paris made of one eighty-two fif, one seventy-two fifty, a ten-dollar reduction. However, I still think that before we do any budget, so I would like to cancel tomorrow and get the priority list from the directors. We really need that priority list because they're speeding without it. They're driving without a speedometer.
Huh? No. I got, I just, I have two clarifying questions. Dealing with the budget, if this thing gets dropped and gets changed, then we can't hold that tomorrow because we gotta change the numbers.
Oh, that's a quick change, though.
Okay. So we'll be okay with that?
We'll be okay. Whatever decision.
When, when is the, the thing on the special tax due to the county?
Ninth of August?
August ninth.
The official's August ninth?
Resolution has to be done by.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, I, we still need, we still, in, in, we still have discussion, when are we gonna get that list of priorities? Cuz to me, that, I don't wanna do any discussion of budgets without the list of priorities from the directors. That is a essential part of us doing zero-based budgeting.
Okay. Right now, we got a motion on the floor. We got, we got a motion, we got a.
Mayor, members of the council, because there's a discussion of a reduction, if I may recommend slightly revised language, which I would like to be included in the motion. Specifically, in section six of the resolution, second sentence states that the council's approving a twenty-eight cent reduction. Since we are now discussing a greater reduction, I would recommend that language be revised to add that the remainder of the reduction represents an exercise of the council's discretionary power to levy the tax in any year that lessens the maximum rate. By doing this, it just clarifies that you still retain authority to adjust it in the future.
So we, so.
So if the council's amendable, the councilmember Smith would amend his motion to include the language as I've recommended, or, or not.
Yes, I will be willing to amend my motion to include the language that our attorney has added to it.
I would accept that, so. Okay. Think.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I say something that we're still in discussion?
Yes, sir.
The, the clock is ticking with every decision that I'm going to make. I'm not looking at tomorrow, I'm looking at four years down the road. We expected, or we were told, that we were gonna have a great amount of cannabis tax at this time. We have a very paltry amount. As, if I'm correct, our, our hotel tax, our, our bed tax is brought in more from one hotel than these businesses. There's not even been a passion to collect the taxes from cannabis. If indeed, in four years, this council or the, the next council's gonna have to come before the citizens and say, one more time, we have to do something to save our city, you're going to, to lose credibility as far as the council and the next council will lose credibility if we do not show we are gonna keep our word. And I would plead with you guys, this is the time to prepare for the inevitable in four years. And, and I would encourage you to, to, to show our, that we can be trusted to the citizens.
Is that it, sir?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the, on the table for one fifty-three reduction and it was second.
Madam Clerk, can we have a vote, please, or would you recall? All right, recall, eight, roll call.
I got you. Councilmember Lusinovich.
Yes.
Paris?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stump?
I'm gonna have to go against my promise because of the situation that our city is in now and I will have to say no.
Mayor McGuire?
No.
Motion upheld.
I would like to make a motion at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I would like to make the same motion as Councilmember Smith, however, making that amount one seventy-two fifty.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion to make it one seventy, reduction to one seventy-two fifty by Mayor Protem Stump, second by Councilmember Paris.
Adding the, what the attorney.
All the others, yes, sir.
Yes.
The verbiage in from the attorney. Okay, roll call or, yeah, roll call, vote for this.
Councilmember Lusinovich?
No.
Paris?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Mayor Protem Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that has been taken care of. We're now going to public hearing one, water standby charges. Fiscal year 2019, 2020 levy, Finance Director Ibanez, and I've declared this public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Public. California City operates a water system that was built to serve a larger number of parcels that were planned for development at the time the water system was designed. Since fiscal year 1993 to 94, the city has charged a water standby charge to undevelop parcels that, when developed, will receive service from the city's existing water system. The amount of this charge ranges from fifteen to twenty-five dollars per year. The charge is collected on the property tax row. Once a parcel is connected to the system, begins receiving and paying for water service, it stops charged, it stops charging the standby charge. Each year, the city council holds a public hearing to approve placing the standby charges on the property tax row. On June 25th, 2019, the city council adopted a resolution initiating those proceedings for fiscal year 2019, 2020 and setting public hearing on the 2019, 2020 charges for tonight's meeting. After conducting the hearings, notice of which was published, the council may adopt the attached resolution which sets the rate for 1920 and directs that the standby charge be collected by the county. The rate of the standby charge is unchanged for the past years and has not been increased since 1993, 94. The recommendations to approve the resolution adopting the water change charges for fiscal year 2019 and 20, the fiscal impact while noted on the staff report says none, based on our estimates, is six hundred and fifty thousand based on an eighty-five percent collection rate. The environmental action and the attachments are attached to the staff report.
Trying to get to, I'm sorry. Is there any clear correspondence?
Yeah, I don't have my.
Council questions?
Council questions?
It does need to ask for correspondence.
No, it's first, no.
No, Mayor, declared hearing. Council questions only.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to get down to that page.
Well, if I could make a, a statement, it, it appears that we are, we are doing the same thing over and over again. There's no question that there is, that there is an issue with the water standby charge. Something, something has to be done to fix this. What can be done to fix it?
I don't know, as far as myself goes. And going over this lately, I've, I've gotten a lot of doubt. And it just, I'm not saying it's messed up or wrong, I'm just saying I've got doubt and I can't put my finger on it. It's like when something's wrong and you're looking at it and you know something's wrong, but you can't put your finger on it. And I've got, and I've got doubt. And I would really like to be able to look at this full throttle without being on a timeframe. We're always on a timeframe. We never seem to have the time to where we can do our jobs right and break something down and look at it every nook and cranny and it's very frustrating. I'm sorry, folks, that was a comment, not a question. I apologize. Do you have any questions, sir?
Truly.
Sir?
Okay, then we're gonna go, Madam Clerk. Any report or, on any communications?
No, sir.
Thank you. Calling for public testimony.
Catherine Efron, California City. I have a real simple question. I hate to say this, but I'm looking at four people that have no clue what this water standby fee is supposed to do. And I think that educational situation needs to be done first. Then we make the decision how we're gonna cover the money that we don't get if we decide not to set up the water standby charge. That's, that's, that's money that comes into our city to maintain the water system that I understand, nobody on this council right now was here when that water system and that water situation was put in place, but we have to live with it. So before we say, okay, we're not gonna charge this anymore, we're not gonna charge a water standby fee anymore, just tell me how you're gonna replace it, with what money, from where. Mr. Stump, you are absolutely correct. I don't know how anybody can do a budget, whether it's the water standby or the city, without first coming up with priorities. I used to budget thirty-two million dollars a year on average and if my directors did not give me priorities, they didn't, I didn't get a budget done and they didn't have a job. Thank you.
You know, Mayor, for her to say that we don't have a clue as to what's going on, I would disagree with. You know, we've, we've gone over this and gone over it. We know exactly what's going on and what is needed and no for her to say we don't have a clue. I just object to.
Okay, sir. Yes, sir.
Al Hudson. The justification for this water standby is a fraud that has been perpetuated on this council. Attempted to be perpetrated on the citizens. By who? By Arrow Engineering. They're the engineers that were contracted to do this engineering report. This engineering has been totally plagiarized by Arrow. You take a look at the, at last year's engineer's report on the water standby, you will see that it has been plagiarized by Arrow, verbatim, with the exception of two paragraphs and those two paragraphs are laced with incorrect calculations. Take a look at it. The intent and purpose of the water standby fees when it was enacted was for the replacement of the aging water lines. And that was to be completed by 2017, but it was extended to 2020. That money has been used for anything and everything except it was, except for its voted intended purpose. And to continue to impose that, especially on people that have no voice, that can't vote, is dead-ass wrong. That's plain and, that's plain and simple. So before this, uh, this water standby tax should be imposed again, we need to have benchmarks in place on what it's being used for and when there's an expected completion, expected completion date of the project for which the fund was initially put in place for. To do anything less is an abuse of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Again, here I am. This is Rick Wayne. Back when I was on the council, we did approve the standby fee from a, at that time, from Craig Black, referring to a report that was generated in 1971. The, the funny part about it was after we basically discussed it and brought it out, the very next monthly meeting, from then on for almost a year, Health Engineering was being charging us a little over ten thousand dollars a month to do a survey and, and report. But I've never, since I was off the council, I never did get the updated report. Do you actually have the health report that was redone back then? A completed report or just the ten thousand dollars a month that was charged to do it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening again. I believe that you've received from me correspondence today. I apologize, wasn't timely yesterday. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it.
You dropped your glasses, DJ on the floor behind you.
Today at 10:04 a.m., to the city clerk and to the council members, I'll read it to you very briefly. Regarding PH1. Regarding PH1 failing to plan, I remember the lies, I'm tired, I'll repeat the same, failing to plan. We've provided additionally to the city manager and to your council a possible form that can be used. If it's your pleasure, you could possibly allow those folks that don't have any proximity to a water line to appeal the water standby fees. I believe you have the discretion to do that. Other jurisdictions do that. There's a legal analysis from Best, Best &amp; Krieger supporting such an appeal in another jurisdiction, although beyond a parcel tax. I've provided that in advance with additional analysis about legalese requiring proportional use. So those properties that have no transmission line, you cannot even make an argument realistically in your own mind that they have any potential to tie into that water line. Many properties in the city, hundreds and hundreds of miles of areas, have no water lines within miles. Many have no easements. Many are not engineered in any capacity, and yet you're passing on a water standby fee based upon a 1971 engineering report. I don't know if women were allowed to vote in 1971, that's how long ago it was. I do know that women could not be attached to a real estate loan application. That'll give you some reference. So it's old, it's tired, it's not appropriate under water law today. Water law today does not support levying and assessment on a property that does not have a transmission line. The only reason that you're allowed to do this is by perpetuating basic fraud. And you are not allowed to perpetuate a water standby fee forever. So I encourage you to consider an amendment that would allow folks that are not connected to the water line to allow those folks to file an appeal and be removed from the fee. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
We're gonna back up here. I think that's an excellent idea as far as...and I thought that this council discussed that a couple months back.
Mayor, pardon me, can you make a mo...
My three minutes are up?
Yes. Can you please close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking for a motion, close public hearing.
Get that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Okay, am I covered? But I thought we discussed that a couple months back, where we were gonna have a form here at City Hall. And I think I even discussed about let's doing one online so people that don't live here in the state can put in the information, APN number, their contact information, and nothing's happened with it that I know of.
It did happen. It was created and then it was changed on the agenda, and we weren't sure about what was gonna be decided tonight. But the appeal form is created and available. We can put it online.
That would be greatly appreciated. Also have it available here for locals if they have property that they feel that they should be exempt. Oh, sorry, you getting people yelling? Sorry, folks. But definitely want one online so people that live out of state and out of country, they can submit. And also, we can have a form locally so people can also submit. Yeah, I agree with that 100%. Let's do it right the first time.
Do we need to put that in our resolution, Counselor?
I would. If it were me.
It doesn't need to be in the resolution, but you can certainly make a motion at your discretion to direct staff to do that. It would be a separate motion. I would recommend keeping them separate because of the nature of the...
Okay.
It's my understanding that we did make that motion and approved the form and that it...we can make the motion again. It's already...the form has been put together and ready to go. Do we need another motion?
No, if this council has already approved the form and directed staff to post it, no further motion is required.
Okay.
With this communication, it'll be done.
Okay.
Okay, we haven't seen the form. We just requested that it be produced and ready to go, and that has happened. If we wanna...
If you guys wanna approve it, I can bring it to the next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I need please to bring that forth as a motion to...with whatever legalese our attorney wants on there.
So to clarify, if this council hasn't seen the form, at your discretion, you can bring it back to approve it. However, you could also, tonight, just direct staff to create an appeal form...I guess one's already been created. To, subject to city attorney review, post the appeal form. I'll make sure it's legally appropriate. You can bring it back if you wanna see it yourself before it gets posted, otherwise you can tell us to do it.
I don't wanna waste the time, Counsel.
Really not.
Can you just email it to us, you know? I trust your word or your judgment when it comes to whether or not it's right or wrong, but... Again, I don't wanna waste the time. I want our constituents to be able to have this form, fill it out, and take care of business. Send it to us by all means. But again, Counselor, I believe if you look at it and say it's good, let's proceed. So I'll hang on for a second. Councilman Smith?
Yes, sir.
So let's keep it two separate ones. We're gonna redo it just to cover our bases. So are you gonna make a motion that we have a form in place, and...well, I can't think of the word I would say, but with approval of the city attorney, where we can post it online and have it posted here at City Hall for people who feel that they should not be paying a water standby fee?
Yes, sir. I'll either make that motion, or if you're gonna make the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, that'll work too. Make the motion. I'll make that motion right now, that it...based on your...
Subject to city attorney review.
Yes.
And staff to post an appeal form.
Yes, exactly. Okay, I'll make that motion, and it's seconded by Councilman Smith. Say yes?
No.
You guys say yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lusinovich?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now we got...now we come back to the other part of this, since it's a double-headed beast, and that's fixing the standby charge.
I'm talking.
Okay, so he can hear from these...
Oh. So, looking for a motion to approve the water standby charge for FY 2019-2020 levy? And there was three...I don't have the numbers right here. I had it written down, something else, and I forgot it. It's 15...what were the numbers? 25, 20, and 15. It's 15, 20, 25. Okay, so...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion. And second for the water standby fee for FY 2019-2020 levy to be levied for $15, $20, and $25.
Mayor, sorry to interject. Just for clarification, if we could read the title of the resolution, because it's adoption of the...
Okay. Sorry about that. All right.
Yeah.
Do you want the clerk to read it?
Yeah, please.
Resolution number 7-19-2799 of the City Council of the City of California City, adopting water standby charges for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2019.
Thank you. So that's the motion. It was first by Lusinovich, second by Paris. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Lusinovich?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Reluctant feeling yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe that the consequence of this action and what we have done in the past is to...and we have to realize we have a water standby charge that is meant to replace worn water lines. We've raised the water rates to replace water lines. We've engaged R-WIMP with the purpose of getting funds for replacing water lines, and nobody knows what's happening. So we're in a position to have to reevaluate all the monies we're collecting, all the actions that we're taking to collect...or collect money to replace lines that we're not replacing, and we have to have a very firm commitment that it's gonna be something different than that.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that we're gonna have to do a water rate study, and in that study, we're gonna have to evaluate all these entities or projects designed to replace our water lines, and they still won't be able to do the job. They still won't be able to complete it. But we have to realistically gauge what we can actually accomplish, and that is something that is not happening at this time. And that's something that this council has to take ownership of and has to commit themselves to commit...to fix and appropriately deliver a service to the community. So I just...I wanna make sure that we got through the boilerplate, but there's some other boilerplate that says things have to be slightly different from...
From now on.
From what this actual item brings.
So what I'm hearing, Councilman Lusinovich, we also need a water master plan, a water rate study, and an engineer's report, you know? And I believe that can all be done by one person to save the city, you know, from going to three different vendors and being charged an excessive rate. So it's time to put that together along with this so that we get these water lines replaced.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Continued business. One, bids for visitor center equipment shop. Karen Sanders, OHP Recreation Program.
Mayor, counsel, and public. Diego is helping me get a PowerPoint presentation set up that I created for this staff report tonight, so if we can give... So the recreational trails program is a federally legislated grant program that is administered by the state. It provides funds to states to develop and maintain recreational trails and trail-related facilities for both non-motorized and motorized recreational trail uses. The Fixing America Surface Transportation Act reauthorized recreational trails program for federal fiscal years 2016 through 2020, 2020, as a set of funds from the transportation alternatives set aside under a surface transportation block grant program. The reason why I say all of this is because there has been some question as to whether or not the visitor center can be relocated to another area of the city. It has to be connected to an OHP trail, which is the reason why we have it at Boraxville. That was a key getting the grant. In 2015, on September 22nd, the OHP Recreation Program approached council asking for a resolution allowing the program to apply for the RTP grant. Council responded positively to the request. Council responded positively to the request, and a resolution was approved. The OHP Recreation Program staff moved ahead with the grant application, and we were ultimately awarded two grants under the RTP program. The first was for the purchase of a 10-wheel dump truck. The second application was for the building of the visitor OHP shop and garage. Both of the applications were successfully funded and approved. The agreement for these two grants was signed by City Manager Wheel in March of 2017. Performance period ends February 7th, 2020. I have this slide here, and I would like for council to look up from your...whatever it is you're doing. We are not asking for the Taj Mahal. And I try to bring this as a little levity, that we're asking for a...that's not fancy. Work on the project's been performed since the time of signing of the project agreement. Architectural plans were solicited from one...or were received from a firm, Space Between Lines, SBL. They submitted suitable plans. Again, as in the previous staff reports on this, that architect died. His firm was paid for his service, and the city was reimbursed for that expense. To date, the city has been reimbursed for a total of $74,674.67, including those architectural plans and some staff match on the grant. Other city staff time has been expended on the project and is subject to reimbursement. City Attorney Baron Bettenhagen has advised these funds would be paid back to RTP should the project be uncompleted, and the RTP regulations also allude to this... Next slide. The city's former engineering firm supplied the cost estimate for the construction of the building, as was submitted in the grant application. This cost estimate was insufficient for the project. RFPs for the project were distributed three times since 2017. The bids all came in over budget for what the grant itself will pay for. At this time, Medallion Contracting has submitted the best bid for the project. The other two bids that were submitted were not qualified. Funding the construction has been the focus of this and previous staff reports submitted to council. Medallion Contracting Incorporated has also made concessions recently in the amount of $64,000, which reduces some costs. Engineering for the project is needed because of the death of the architect. Roger Haney has submitted the best bid. He is a licensed structural engineer and has experience with commercial buildings. He has performed work in California City and comes highly recommended to the project. His services will be required if and when there are questions regarding the structural project. Next slide. Yeah, thank you. There's a term in real estate called comps, and if you have any kind of a real estate transaction, that should be something that you're familiar with. I actually went to Jobone and took pictures of the shop, not the complete complex, because a complete complex is the shop and a visitor center. The shop garage at Jobone is similar to the building that we are proposing. Next slide. You can see inside the building that there is a vast open place. That would be the shop garage. For our purposes, half of the building would consist of visitor center. It would have built-out walls. It would be finished with an office. Of course, it has to have restroom facility. There's storage, upstairs storage and downstairs storage in the shop garage part, and the shop would have very similar appearance to what exists at Jobone. would have very similar appearance to what exists at Jobone. So, here we are in the process. The, the grant's been awarded. Plans have been received. Costs have been calculated and recalculated and recalculated. Concessions have been received by Medallion Contracting. Funding sources have been sought and researched. More project research has been performed, and the project has been presented to council on multiple occasions. I have, and gave the city council a new staff report with some new information. The cost per bid near as a million, four fifty-one fifty-six, four thirty-one fifty-six. The R T P grant award remains at seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The difference in the grant versus the bid is four hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. We have retained earnings from permit sales of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. We have net revenue from permit sales for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen of eighty thousand, two ninety-eight twelve. I've applied for an O H V development grant for this, from the state, O H M V R Division, for seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. We will learn the result of that on Monday, August the fifth. There is match anticipated for that development grant in the sum of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, and, so, that totals to ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. In the meantime, I left out, and that was my mistake, I left out the anticipated net revenue for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and I'm estimating that we will have net revenue from permit sales in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. That gets us to the, the real need for assistance with the project of eleven thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. Next slide. We're at a crossroads. We have two choices. Medallion Contracting has said that they will not move ahead with the project if we're not able to give them a thumbs up this evening, and we'll have to abandon the project. And I've talked to Joe probably about fifteen times today about this, and that's, that's the message that I get. If we don't proceed with the project, we'll end up reimbursing the R T P program, the seventy-four thousand, six hundred, seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents with no, no progress. No building, that, that's Borax Bill Park. There are two modular trailers that are there. Those have been repurposed, so that's where the building would go, and it would just be dirt. However, next slide. If actually able to move ahead, it's going to cost us eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. I'm ready to answer questions.
Anything from the, we'll bring it to the public first.
I get it, Allenville Council City. I get it, they need to have a building out of Borax Bill. Or, since we have an O H V trail into town, we could put it in town. We have an O H V trail along Noralia, and I think it's another street out there. Why not have it in town, sit out of Borax Bill?
Rick Warren. Well, it didn't get overwhelmed vote at that time, because I voted against it when I was a council. Let's, let's clarify a few things. Trails are not trails, they're roads. Permits are not permits, they're parade permits. That's how we're legally doing it out there. Okay? The numbers, wow, interesting. It was going to be five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Okay, they dropped it by sixty grand, and now it's four hundred and seventy-three thousand. Match up the numbers. You can fluff up those numbers really good, and she has done a good job at that. Let me put it this way. I got tomorrow's budget report. Already, they're two hundred and forty thousand behind, so how can they have a net revenue when they don't even have two hundred and forty thousand? I'm looking at tomorrow's meeting budget, page one, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars in the negative already. Okay? And then you're looking at, uh, when you're looking at other budgets involved here, you've got to go beyond the fact that this building should not be there. This is the central area between California City and the Second Community. This is a lot of property out there that cannot be built. There's a house right there across the street from it that's been forever for sale. It's on one point eight acres, twenty-seven hundred square foot, extra garages. No one wants to buy it because it's across the street from the motorcycle track. This is affecting the property owners of that area. I'm speaking for people that don't get to speak. You're getting fifteen-dollar permits. I, again, believe that those businesses out there, loose business, Mr. Elm's businesses out there should be running these motorcycle programs. We need to give the business to them. If we're going to have motorcycle riding, it needs to have, for one, a ranger, make a park ranger. The city has over a hundred and twenty acres that that could be used to utilize for camping. I've been to Lake Isabella. You don't have to go in there and put major infrastructure. They use porta-potties on certain parts of that lake. So, the reality is, we've got fake, fudgy numbers saying that these revenues are going to come in. Remember, the fire department, police, I mean, the fire department building, remember that budget? It was only going to be eight hundred thousand dollars. With all the changes and everything, we've got a one-point-five-million-dollar metal building. What are we going to get at O H V? For one, and you know what? I'd like to know where the other two bids are, because we're only dealing with one bid. You're supposed to have three bids. If you don't have legally three bids, you don't have a good, uh, source for property value, and I do do real estate. Thank you.
Ed Francis of Jobone. Rick, I hate to say it, but you probably are the last person to try to stifle any growth in California City. You have the goose that laid the golden eggs, yet you go against O H V. What else do you have?
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
We could request the public direct their comments to the council.
What, what did he say?
Direct him, direct your comments to us, please. Thank you.
Where else, where else do you have the ability to come and recreate in California City and bring new money, as Lou Parantos has been saying all along? We come here without any advertising. This is the craziest thing. The Chamber of Commerce is going to be spending a lot of money, and, and Chuck is going to work with a lady. We've got to bring new stuff in. The Second City, there's never going to be buildings in the Second City. There's twelve buildings in Borax, in, in Silver Saddle, that's it. The lady across the street, she's selling it because she's moving to, she's got a new job in, in Palm Dale. That's why that's, that's not, he says, that's, that's not true, that she's been trying to sell it. She, she, she wants to sell it, but she just moved to Palm Dale. So, I mean, he, he, he has untruths. We need this building because a visitor center will attract visitors. I've proved it with El Mirage. I've proved it with Jobone. Look at what we've done. That's the building that we built for one-point-five-million dollars. We built that one and the visitor center. Fred Whitney is the one who did it. He did all the work for me on that building. That's exactly the same building. It's beautiful. People love it. That's ten years old. You wouldn't know if that's ten years old, but we pride ourselves. We maintain it, and it's good. People come and visit it. And so, the numbers that, that, that are being presented to you are totally reasonable, they're attainable. Remember, this is money. Dr. Nick, this is not your money. This is federal money. Where do you get, where does any business in this town get free money to run their operation? You don't. You want to stay in business? You've got to make the money. We don't have to make the money. Think about it. You get it from the federal government. You get it from the O H V area. Where the heck do you get that kind of a deal? And you don't have to pay it back. I, you know, I just don't understand why somebody wouldn't embrace economic development in the O H V area where the people would love to come here. They love California City. Don't ask me why, but they love California City. I don't ride here, I go to Jobone. But they love coming to California City. Take advantage of it. Build upon that, and this is what this building will do. The number, the numbers are insignificant. The numbers I told Karen and Eric. You want the eleven thousand dollars? I'll give you the eleven thousand dollars. I'll give it to you from, from Jobone. You want to give, you want me to pay it to, to the City of California City? I'll pay it to the City of California City. But let's get this project going, because this is your last chance. You will never, trust me, you will never, never get that kind of deal again, period. It just doesn't happen. It just doesn't happen. I was denied an R T P grant in El Mirage by Sixto. I am surprised. I'm surprised he gave it to Karen. I had the same building going down in El Mirage, and I didn't get it, but he says it didn't qualify. But she got it in there, so.
Time.
I would say, go for it. There's a lot of faith in there. There is no building taking place in the Second City. You've got twenty thousand lots in the First City to be built on. Twenty thousand lots are empty here. That's where you need to focus your, your emphasis in. So, let's go for it and, and, and get this going, so get some economic development going.
And there's, um, Al Hudson, there's one problem that I see, and, uh, that is, the O H V'ers have not been spending the anticipated money in the, in the city. As a matter of fact, looking at Mr. Ibanez's calculations for the parcel tax, it shows a gross estimated sales and use tax revenue of only two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars. You extrapolate that with the projected pop, uh, number of riders, you can get the average dollar amount that they're spending, and it's nowhere near this, you know, any sustainable amount to pay for anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Catherine Efford, California City. I beg to differ with Al, partially because the sales tax cannot reflect what the O H V people spend in this city. And the reason for that is the O H V people spend a lot of money in places that do not charge sales tax. Let me give you an example. The beauty shop. The beauty shop gets on an average of about six people a weekend, um, on the high weekends, sometimes more, that come in. The ladies come in and get hair, get nails, get pedis, uh, things that, and, things that they don't have time to do, but while their husbands are running around on the desert and their kids, they're in the beauty shop. That's money. That's money for the city. Those people work here, they live here, they spend their money here. I know, I go buy their lunches at, at the stores, the, our, like Albertos and every place. The gentleman who owns Arius RV Repair. I know for a fact that I have seen O H V RVs, big ones, means big money. You can't put a roof on a fifth wheel for less than ten thousand dollars. Know that for a fact. Just paid for one, it was nine thousand and some dollars, almost ten thousand dollars. The, the churches, um, I have seen O H V people. They may not look like they're riding a motorcycle, they may not come to the church in the motorcycle, but when I come in, and I, I've been to the churches, and they've said, um, one in particular I was at recently, and a couple of people said hello to me, and I said, "What'd you do with your motorcycle? Stash it?" "Yeah." Okay. So, churches get money, they get donations, et cetera. The pizza parlor, the, I don't know how much taxes are collected from pizza, because they don't pay, you don't pay tax on, I don't know whether it's when you eat it there, you don't pay tax, or when you take it out. I just pay the bill. So, but the pizza parlors, the restaurants, uh, the Mexican restaurant, Albertos, they all are enjoying money. It's just not reflected in the sales tax that is coming into the city. Wait till the, wait till the cannabis retail outlet is open on California City Boulevard, and you say, "Oh, RV drivers, riders use cannabis?" You bet they do. You ought to, you ought to see. Big money, big money. The delivery guys are finding out that, that they need to have an address. I think maybe someone will give them an address, but I can tell you, these people smoke it, they eat it, they drink it, and it's big money. Wait till we start to see the sales tax from Mr., what's his name? Rick, don't, oh, the gunshot, right. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Wady speaking.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, how you doing? Now, I do have a question. This visitor center shop, who is the basic owner or manager of this shop in O H V land?
The city is.
The city is?
The city over by the city property.
Okay. Now, is this money going to go, that you make revenue from, going to go to the city or go to O H V?
That's up to council.
Okay. Now, is the B M X, the bike shop over by the pizza shop still in business?
Yes.
Okay. And the RV?
Yes.
Building by Cactus. So, my question is, why are we building another building when these two businesses would need that?
Those are private businesses. They're not a municipality or government agency. The grant was meant for and, uh, is taken advantage of by an agent, a government agency or municipality. It's not a private business grant. It's for a city, a county, state facility.
Okay, so this is money for the city to make or O H V to make? It's either one, depending on what the council is going to do?
Well, the city and O H V are joined at the hip. O H V is not a standalone program apart from the city. It's a function of the city.
Well, I'm just asking a question because in other, um, in other councils, I know O H V, I'm hearing O H V has their own set of funds, and money goes into O H V.
We do, because we have grants that we get from the state of California, and we have to have a source of match for those grants. We do have, we do have funds that are, that come from permit sales.
So, tonight, the question is whether, um, whether this building gets completed, and then after that, where the funds go, whether it goes into H O V or whether it goes into the city fund.
It would be O H V, and it's up to the council where it goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeannie O'Laughlin. I have a couple of issues with this. One, um, like, like I said before, my husband and sons have been riding. My husband's been riding since before he was born practically. So, we use a lot of the, the trails, um, but you know what? They don't go to a riding spot to go to a visitor center to look at a video or to get pamphlets, and, and granted, I've only worked out at O H V one day, Thanksgiving. People came in, got their stuff, and went out, because they come out there to ride. That's their main focus is to ride. I have yet to see a project that doesn't go over budget, and so, provided, here we're saying eleven thousand, four ninety-four, which, uh, is if everything is aligned, but what happens if there's any little fluke? Now, we've got more money. The other issue is, I've been working with groups for the last year and a half. Realistically, how can they possibly get a building built in six months when nobody else can? They've had problems with the architect, drawings, there's a lot of work that has to be done, and if we don't get it done, then we're going to be eating more than the seventy-four thousand. So, I think we should cut our losses, pay the seventy-four thousand back, and be done with it, and wait for the next opportunity to come around. It's not something, there's people in this town that don't even know there's an O H V park out there. So, I, I think this is not serving the citizens in the best way that we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
On the subject of the O H V, I have a lot of property in the immediate vicinity, all around the area. I have no complaints about O H V, I have no complaints about the visitor's center. I do want you to ponder, will the vehicles be required to pave the streets? Pave the parking, the same as you're requiring of the cannabis businesses? You just passed a parcel tax. If you're gonna have these facilities, and you're gonna issue permits for people to be riding all around the desert, tearing up the desert, you really need to look at your provisions on the cannabis people as well. You're asking more of them, I believe, than you're asking of O H V.
Thank you, sir. Bringing it up here. Is nobody else? I've got, I've got a couple of questions then. How much is, how much is the cost of this building? No, no, the physical building itself, not all the bells and whistles, just the physical building itself.
Thanks, Joe.
It's a pre-manufactured building similar to the fire station, the pool house, so this particular building's gonna cost around ninety-five thousand dollars.
Ninety-five thousand?
Yes, just the building itself.
Okay. Because I saw one, I happened to do some looking online, and saw one that was for sixty-nine thousand, which met all the high winds and everything for Kern County. And it's, and it was eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Yeah, I mean, what happens is, when you see prices like that, you have to actually compare apples to apples. In here, you're getting the insulation, you're getting the doors, the roll-up doors, you're getting the windows, you're getting the walk-through doors. And this building has actually been engineered for future stucco on the outside. So there was a little more engineering, it was a little bit stronger. So in the future, if the city wanted to, they could put stucco on the outside, it would hold the weight. Yeah. Yeah, then, then, this is a mute point, because this quote does not include stucco. The stucco is gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We took it out when we put out the rebid.
How much, a hundred and fifty?
Thousand. So this quote does not include stucco, so then... Yeah.
The numbers are gonna be wrong. I don't have any other questions.
What's that?
I don't have any other questions.
So if I understand, Mr. Barrigan, we would have to add another hundred and fifty thousand to the building, to the ninety-five thousand?
Well, it's a little more complicated than that. That's gonna extend the project. Six months, six months was, we would do contracts tomorrow, we would send out a notice to proceed. We talked to the, the company said it'd take three months to build a building. But we've worked with them in the past, we got the pool house from them, we got the fire station. They say they could probably do it in nine or ten weeks, and they wouldn't charge us anything extra. They're gonna try to expedite it, because we're good customers. But, but we didn't, we don't have in the schedule to put up the, you had to put like a durable glass on the exterior, you gotta put like lath, you gotta put the stucco. It's gonna, I don't, I don't think the schedule will be made. And I had to go back to look at the original bids to see what, because the stucco was done as a line item, in case the project came in over budget. And the first, the first bid we got, when we put out the first, this is the third time we put out the bid, to try to lower costs. So we did get one bid where the stucco was included, and I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand. I'd have to go back and check. I could be wrong, could be a little more. But I know it was extensive, that's why it was taken out the third time, because I thought it could be taken out.
Joe, would we all confirm that tonight?
What was that?
Would we all confirm the stucco siding tonight? Because if we're gonna have to do a hundred and fifty thousand and withdraw, it's...
Yeah, I think, I think it's, yeah, it looks like. I mean, just, everything just, with all the issues we had and the problems, we're up against a tight deadline. I mean, as it was, we were already pushing it. The contractor was already thinking that he didn't want to take the project on, because it was just too close of a window. He didn't want to put his reputation on line, then not get through with the project. And now if we got on top of that, the stucco, I just, I don't think it's, time-wise, I don't think we're gonna be able to cut it.
So we're out of time?
It looks like it.
That's a shame.
Plus, Mr. Walltime has a check ready for a hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
That would work.
All right, John Elms, live here in Cal City. I own the motocross track out there, so I see everybody that goes out there. Is there any way? Let me back up. Last meeting we had, Joe Barrigan said that it first came back at eight hundred thousand, then it went to one point two million. So he said last meeting that there was a four hundred thousand dollar discrepancy on the engineering. That's what you said last meeting. Yeah, on the engineering. So that's four hundred thousand dollars right there. Now, tonight, right as we're about to get this, now it's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's unexpected. So someone's gotta look at this a lot better. So instead of watching all this money just go, can you make it smaller? I'm not asking you. I'm asking you, can you make it smaller?
Yes, sir, answer.
The...
So we don't have to just say bye to this money and then end up spending seventy-four thousand dollars, because we can't do it?
So the basic spec that was written in the grant was for a six thousand square foot facility and from understanding a stucco siding on O H V Trail as designated at Boraxville Park. So, because it's spec on, on the grant, the grant agreement, yeah, we can't, we can't go smaller than six thousand. It was, it was larger. And we already, from the previous meeting to today, we looked at the plans, ends up it was sixty-two hundred or so. Some, it was a little bit more than six thousand, and we reduced it down to six thousand. It really didn't change all too much.
I just feel sorry for you guys. I mean, it's a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar mistake that's now costing you guys seventy-four thousand dollars. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Can there be an extension on it? Or a change in the?
Yeah, so the answer is, on this particular grant, the deadline is the February seventh, twenty twenty. I believe Joe had talked to the reps from Medallion, and if we were gonna delay this anymore, they couldn't do it if we wanted them to, to hurry up. It would cost the city more money to build out. So we're at, we're at that point.
Any other questions, sir?
No.
Any questions from you, sir?
Councilman Smith, do you have any, any questions in reference to this?
Yes, I have a number, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know, what is the projected manning? Is it going to be new employees, new staff to be hired? What's the projected maintenance cost? It's a metal building, not covered by stucco in the desert. What's the projected utilities a month? What happens if we do not complete it by the finish date? Is the city gonna be, gonna be stung with all that cost? I'm a little familiar with fire station. After three years, Medallion has yet to finish off the hood in the kitchen. Here's a beautiful, beautiful kitchen, and the hood has yet to be finished. Every time that I'm in there, from the very first summer in the engine bay, when our men that are coming in from taking the turnouts off miserably hot, and the evaporative cooling, the cooling is horrible in there. If it has worked, it's been very rare, because every time I've been in there, when it's hot, it is, it's incredible. I don't know if it's been fixed yet, this week, but even last week, in the heat. Guys came in and just, just happened to be over there, and it was just, it was stifling hot. So if for some reason this goes through, I think there has to be a codicil placed on there that Medallion needs to, needs to fix after three years. The cooling in the, in the engine bay, and finish that hood vent in the kitchen. Finish the, finish the job on that.
Okay, sir.
With the expansion joint in the concrete in front of that. I think it ended up being about a hundred and nineteen, having doing the, the new framing for the doors. The concrete expanded, and there was some epoxy poured in there.
Councilman Smith, sir?
The finish on it looks horrible for a...
Sir, could you bring it, could you bring it back on to O H V, please?
Okay, well, I'm just saying...
Yeah, I know, you're using that for example to show that things weren't done right.
Okay, so, so I would like that. Manning, uh, manning projections, maintenance cost projection, utilities projection, and, and I don't really think that they're gonna be able to get it done on that date. And if it's not done, what happens with the grant? Is the city gonna be, be stuck with that? Those would be my specific questions, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I believe the, this item's been withdrawn. Chief, is that correct? Based on the information from, from Joe tonight, I believe that we're gonna go ahead and withdraw, but probably needs to be discussed is, there's still gonna be a money issue for paying back the seventy-eight thousand.
Well, we can, we, if there's, on the payback, we can bring that back after the, after our budget, and then figure out where it's gonna come from. Correct?
So, yeah, so...
So, so in reference, in reference to continue business one, that's being pulled. Correct? Okay. Going to N B two, ceiling project for City Hall. Senior Building Official Barrigan.
Mayor, council.
There we go.
The current ceiling we have here at City Hall makes it really difficult for access. The type of, the way the tiles interlock, and it's an old type of tile that isn't produced anymore. We have to almost break the tile to get up in there to get access, and then you can't put it back the way, the way it was designed, where it interlocks. So we end up having to do things like this, where we just kinda glue it together. So staff has put together a proposal to change the ceiling in the lobby area of City Hall outside, where we would take the existing tiled out and put in a drop ceiling. Along with that, we'd have to add lights, and then there's a huge benefit to doing this. This would be done with staff in-house. We would just be looking and buying material. It would allow us to have access to that area, which would also give us some access to the council chambers.
Will that give us access to the air conditioning?
Yes, that'd be, yes, definitely. And for some, for some reason, too, I'm not sure why, but there's like a double roof on this building.
Yeah, that's the original roof. You've got, you've got the ceiling, you've got the roof, and in between the two, you've got the original roof from this building.
Yeah, so access in that particular area is really, really difficult. That's why a lot of times, too, if you walk in City Hall, you'll see exposed wiring, things like that, because it's just too difficult to get up in the attic. So we're bringing forth this proposal. It's gonna be to buy just material, the work will be done with our facility staff, and it would be to do a T-bar ceiling. The cost of the ceiling material is about a thousand dollars. The electrical components, which would be the, the T-bar fixtures, the wire, switches, little miscellaneous, things like that, would be around eighteen hundred dollars. We also wanna add a TV in the lobby. In the future, that TV will also pick up the council meetings, during council meetings, so people can see it outside. But during the day, it'll be a smart TV, so we use our Wi-Fi to put on like Animal Planet or something, to keep some of the customers, you know, entertained while they wait for the water lines. Hopefully, it calms some of the tension out there. And then another thing, we have a hundred and fifty dollars in there. We take one of the sample tile out, ship it out to get tested, just to make sure there's no asbestos in it. And then we just put some feeds in there for like miscellaneous parts and components, just, you know, because it's hard to list every little thing, screws, anchors, and so forth. And so we have a not-to-exceed four thousand dollars. If there's a little bit of money after we get everything we wanna do, we would close up the window at the building department, too, where there's a roll-up door. That would just come out, and we'd put what it does in there, drywall and patch and paint that area. So we are recommending City Council approve the ceiling project at City Hall, and authorize the city manager to purchase materials and allow the overtime to complete the project. Project materials and parts cost not to exceed four thousand dollars. I forgot to mention that. So the work would have to be done during off days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but that would be overtime for our people.
Yeah, so, because the public can't be exposed to it. And I just, I just wanna let everybody know, I don't know how they're gonna vote. I'm hoping everybody says yes on this, because the four, the four offices on the north side of this building get zero air, zero heating. And when it's hot outside, it's hot in there, and when it's cold outside, it's cold in there. Just to let you know.
Joe, who's gonna, what part of staff is gonna be doing this?
It'd be our facility staff, so Mike Spencer, and I'd help out as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had some questions. Okay, so four thousand in materials, and you said it's gonna be in overtime, so how much in labor?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's so difficult to calculate that. We haven't even taken the ceiling down, we don't know what we're gonna expect. I think it'd be dishonest for me to throw a number out there.
Ballpark, just four thousand in labor?
Oh, no, I mean, I don't know what the labor rates are. I could tell you, we could probably get it done in two weekends. You know, working that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then next weekend, just Saturday, Sunday.
How many people?
It'd be three. And then there will be overtime for me, I'm exempt, but there'd be overtime for Mike and Spencer.
No, I, I only said that because I know you're great, you do everything really good, so that's...
Councilman Smith, do you have any questions, sir?
Well, I don't have any questions. I know Joe does good work. I know Mike and Spencer do good work. I'm just really conflicted, because it was just at the last meeting that we, that prior to my being appointed to council, that the, the council spoke about overtime, this has to be stopped. This would definitely, definitely improve that area. Could there not be something of a rescheduling, so it's not going to be overtime? Because I would be willing to volunteer for painting, but I just can't, with what was stated last meeting, approve overtime, and we're not even sure how much it's going to be. I just can't do that based on principle.
Well, I, I don't believe it can be done during normal business hours because of the hazard to the public. It's, it's work hazard overhead. It's still overtime.
It's still overtime, no matter when.
You can't, you can't adjust their schedule, readjust their schedule when they've got things scheduled for normal business hours. Yeah. No, come up.
Mayor and council.
Hi, Mary.
Hi there. We could actually, if the employees that's going to do this work would agree to adjusting their schedule, then we could adjust their work schedule, so we could work around. I know we can't do anything to purposely avoid paying. I do understand that, paying employees overtime. But in this situation, since we're short of money, if those employees are willing to help out, they would then need to agree to adjust their time.
So when will we find out? If, if, if this were to be approved, when will we find out if they would agree to schedule adjust? Okay. Any, any comments from the public?
Jim Creighton, California City. If you have a contractor do this and he does it during the evenings or day, uh, weekends, he's gonna charge you a premium. Um, the, the job needs to be done, no doubt about it, but I think that the project cost is not complete yet. Testing hasn't been done yet and if it is positive, that entire lobby's gonna be closed down until you can get a clear, clear san, clear air sample. Now, my past experience in environmental, uh, you were supposed to be certified to take samples. You can't just yank down a piece and ship it off. There's a chain of custody that's involved. At least that is with the feds. I don't know what the state requires or our local government. But I think you should do the testing first and then bring the project back with a full project cost. It's not complete as of yet.
Yeah. I think the last time they did a test, um, it came back negative.
He's testing adhesive.
Yes.
That could be-
Fryable.
Older than most of us.
Yeah, if it's got, it's got, and it, and it's friable.
Not all of us, we're mostly-
What's that?
Older than most of us, or not all of us.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mary Wady speaking. I hear the city has become short of money. How is that? If, if that's what I just heard.
Can I answer that?
No, well, we'll have-
I, I think it was a figure of speech. There is no actuality to that comment. We're okay.
Okay, so what's going on with the city park? There's items like benches and chairs missing out the park.
We're on something different.
Oh, my bad. I thought we was up for a public comment when you said-
No, no.
Okay. I'll save it for you.
Okay. We're, we're still, we're still on the, on the lobby, on the NB one.
Up here, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I agree with Mr. Creighton. I believe we should do the asbestos testing to see where we're at before we authorize this, just because, you know, we don't know what we're gonna get ourselves into.
So, uh, there's no glue in these tiles that interlock with uh, it's like there's a divided slot in between them, it's metal, so they're not glued up there, not the old ones. The new ones that they put up that don't have asbestos in them, that are within the last fifteen, twenty years, those are, are, do have glue. Um, what he's talking about is probably a spec. We, we do have a contract with Carzan where they would come out and then it, it probably costs about twelve hundred dollars, that's what they quoted us, to have them test it. Uh, the California uh, Contractors Board does allow for, to contractors to demo up to a, a, a hundred square feet of asbestos if they're certified and have all that stuff, which I do, but I mean, this is, we have old tiles, so it's just a matter of going to get an old tile and mailing it in and getting it tested. If it even hints at being positive, then we would get Carzan in here and do actual tests and be brought back to council and say, this is what we found. But we're anticipating that we're not gonna find anything, we're hoping, and that's why we're doing it this way. But if council wants us to wait, we can.
Yeah.
And we can bring Carzan in here or wait till that, that one test comes back or just-
I'm comfortable with Joe, you know, if he feels uh, good about it, uh, you know, we're still gonna have it tested, correct? So, uh, you know, if there's, we know the issues with asbestos, but if you're comfortable that you don't believe it's there, send it off, let's see and let's proceed with this.
Sure. Sir?
So, all, all we're, all we're, all you're indicating is that the test be done on, on the existing drop ceiling and if it comes back negative, then to go ahead and do the project.
Whatever the uh, ceiling that we're going to replace, you know, are we replacing all of this and just the hallway? Right, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I have no problem approving this if this is, if, if the men will be willing and it'd be a wonderful thing if they would to reschedule their hours to do this, but we're sending the wrong figure when just, just last meeting, the council that was seated emphasized no overtime and we're not even sure how much overtime we're authorizing. And we're, we're all these men that are involved in this will do a wonderful job. The last time we did a remodel, when, when uh, Mayor Pro Tem Stump said no, um, no change orders, the change orders are more than fifty percent of the project. And I don't know how we can start something authorizing overtime, not necessarily knowing what they're gonna get into, with not knowing what it's gonna cost. If this is gonna be done on normal, uh, I, without overtime hours, I am, I, I'm all for it, but I don't see how we can authorize open-ended overtime, especially as what was just said two weeks ago by the seated council at that time.
Okay, sir.
I, I, I have one. Um, if it's okay.
Yes, sir.
You've come to us with a proposal of four thousand dollars. That's for materials. Um, if we're gonna, that's an example of understating what you're gonna give to us because not only will it be four thousand dollars, but it'll be the labor cost, it'll be um, sending off the material to be tested, it'll be all kinds of things which um, might bring it to, say, fifteen thousand dollars. That fifteen thousand dollars is not in the budget, is it?
Particular one that, the sta, the staff report?
No, is that fifteen thousand dollars in your nineteen-twenty budget?
Yes, yes, it is, excuse me, yes, it is.
That particular thing, so you're coming to us and it says four thousand, but that particular item that Mr. Barrigan just brought, brought to us is gonna say fifteen thousand dollars or will it say four thousand dollars?
Four thousand.
But it's gonna cost more than four thousand.
Correct.
So, and because of unseen-
There's other factors, you're right.
There's other factors. So, that is the example of what, what I talk about when I say not projecting the true costs of items. Um, we really need to do that. It needs to be in the budget and um, again, that is why I'm pushing for postponing the budget for um, a week. Did you get a priority list that had that as one item that needs to be done? From the Acting Public Works Director, and I'm not putting you on the spot, Joe.
No, I did not get a list, but we did have a discussion in terms of what his goals were for-
Oh, I understand, but us who are gonna make the decisions on the budget, we need to see priority lists from the directors and he's a director now, so what I'm saying is we need to see those priorities and we aren't seeing them. So, is this a number one for him? Is this a number two, number three, number four? Where does it lie between one and, I don't know, you might have a thousand priority items.
I, I understand what you're saying and yes, I would not be able to prioritize what the project is at the moment, so.
So, therefore, we need that list before we can discuss, have any rational discussion of what our budget should be? Yes, ma'am?
I think we should bring this back when it's more complete. We need to do more work on it with all the other factors that were just mentioned.
So, we're gonna cook some more. Yee-haw.
I'll bring my fan in for you. But yeah, it's not comple, it's not complete with great numbers.
Okay, so we're gonna, so, go ahead and have him bring it, table it?
Yes.
Oh, everybody in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 Aye. Bring it back.
Actually, if, if it goes into the budget and there's a line item in the budget, it doesn't have to be brought back to us at all. Once we approve the project, then he's gonna make sure it happens and he's gonna bring back the, the way it's gonna cost.
Uh, real quick, Mary, if I can, if I can get authorization to at least have one of the tiles tested?
Sure.
And then that will give us a little big picture and if it, even a hint of asbestos-
Absolutely.
We know it's twelve hundred and we have to get Carzan.
Well, if it comes back with a- Do we have to do a motion on that?
For a hundred bucks?
No, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. If that, that's, it has to be cleaned, it's a hundred bucks a test.
If we just mail the, it was, if we just mailed a sample out, it should be less than a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, going down to NB two. Proposed purchase of new hybrid battery for the two oh six, two thousand six Prius.
So, the, the two thousand six Prius that has less than ninety thousand miles on it, uh, it's a, it, the hybrid battery on it has gone, has, has, I guess expired on it, it doesn't work anymore. Um, the, a new battery would be, with installation from the dealership and everything, would be around four, four thousand dollars. So, we're asking council if they would authorize the city manager to purchase the hybrid battery for the Prius and have the dealership install it at a cost not to exceed four thousand dollars.
Anybody have any from the, from the public?
I do, for fifty hundred.
Yeah, the battery's not-
Hi, this is Rick Warren again. I apologize. Um, you know, I did a Kelly Blue Book on a, a two thousand six Prius. Trade-in value, twenty-three hundred dollars. Uh, sell, private party, uh, four thousand, six hundred dollars. You're gonna put four thousand dollars in a vehicle that isn't worth four thousand dollars. Uh, I would recommend suggesting two other options, either uh, utilize that four thousand dollars as a down payment with a trade-in of this other vehicle and buy a decent vehicle that's gonna last another ten, fifteen years. Remember, after ten years, yes, we got a battery. What's next? What's next? What's next? Um, being in the car business, been a mechanic many times, uh, I would suggest using that money better served either a leased vehicle for a period of time or purchase another vehicle than to put four thousand dollars into a car that's trade-in values right around twenty-three hundred, if they'd give you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeannie O'Laughlin, sorry, I have to take the opposite view. Um, if the car is in good condition, a Toyota lasts a long time. This is two thousand six, it's already thirteen years. Um, if four thousand dollars is gonna get you another ten years, I think it's well worth it because you're not gonna get a new car for four thousand dollars. And when you buy a new vehicle, now you've got more insurance that has to be covered. Um, and if the, the car is good as is and that's all it needs is a battery, I think that's a good investment.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bringing it up here. Anybody?
I have something.
Okay.
Has the owner of a hybrid car, um-
That's a roller skate.
No, not that one out there. Not that one. That one actually is animal control. I have like twelve mice in the back running on a treadmill. But as the owner of a hybrid car, uh, most of us always look at battery life. The fact that it's a two thousand six and the battery has lasted that long, that is very good, long time. Um, there are, Priuses are probably the most popular um, hybrid car cause they've been around. They're the second hybrid car that came out. Probably everybody knows the Honda Insight was the first, but the Prius is the one that has continued basically with the same model. You can buy a two thousand four to two thousand nine Prius battery refurbished from Green Bean Battery Company for um, fifteen hundred, forty-nine dollars. Now, um, if you go to the dealer, it's always higher, um, but if you go with a third-party and you have, and you look in Lancaster for somebody who's a third-party company that can do that, and there are some, we could probably get away with two thousand dollars versus four thousand dollars. So, my um, recommendation, and also, um, if, just a little education on, on batteries that go in those cars, um, a lot of times what they do when they refurbish them, they don't necessarily replace them. There's a, a machine that you can buy, which I've already purchased for mine, and you can um, basically almost renew your batteries. You run it, all your batteries through that, you hook it up and it takes a while to do it, but um, your batteries will last for a long time. And I learned that from a friend who has like seven Honda Insights, um, and he's an expert on it, plus he's a bachelor's and master's in electrical engineering. But anyway, back to this, I would highly recommend us looking at um, third-party batteries and maybe a, um, I don't know if Dennis Automotive can do it, I don't know if that's their specialty, but somebody whose specialty it is working with hybrid cars, getting a, um, getting them to replace the battery. And it's, again, my friend does it and it's not that difficult, so. Um, but if we can't, if we wanna go with the dealership, still four thousand dollars as Dr. O'Laughlin said, I think for, for a Prius is a good deal because they last for a long time and you'll get three, four hundred thousand miles out of that Prius. Thank you.
Sir, anything?
No, really.
Looking for a motion, uh, for council to discuss and approve, uh, purchase of the installation.
Ask Councilman Smith if he has-
No, I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, Councilman Smith, sir, do you have anything in reference to this?
Well, I'm, I, I'm no subject matter expert on uh, on Priuses. Um, i- if we could get, if we could get a battery for two thousand, um, I think that would, um, I think it'd be a great thing if it's not emergent to have that right now. And if you're gonna find a, a cheaper battery and you could find a, a beefier horn, uh, at a decent price, I'd love to see our, our Acting Public Works Director show up in a job site and beep the horn, uh, that sounds like a, a much bigger vehicle. I think it would give a little more credibility to that. Uh, I think, I think it's, I think it's worth looking for a cheaper battery if we could.
Okay, well, we can put that part of the uh, um, uh, motion.
But in order, in order to discuss, I, I would make a motion that we, that we purchase the new hybrid battery so that we can discuss that.
The horn?
The horn?
Yeah, the horn, that's a donation. That was supposed to be funny, it'll be last.
So, are you, so are you making a motion, uh, on this?
Well, I, I thought, I went out just for a few on here. I, I think it's important that if this is not emergent at this very moment, that, that as, as Colonel Stump brought up, a deeper battery, if we can get something half the price, um, that would certainly make, uh, Mr. uncertain. Uh, a different, uh, I'm somebody that drives a car until it dies and um, so, uh, I hate to see us getting a lease, so.
Well, yeah, the only, the only thing is on this, it is a little bit of an emergence because uh, Joe is using his personal vehicle, that means we have to pay mileage.
We, hy, uh, there's, the Honda Insight is the only hybrid I know of that can run without a battery, without the um, the battery pack. The Prius has to have the battery pack, so I will make a motion now that we look into getting a third-party battery and third-party professional installation. If we can't do that, then we purchase the battery from Toyota with the Toyota installation.
Okay. Got a first and second by uh, Councilman Lysinovich. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Lysinovich?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public business from the floor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda and over which the City Council has jurisdiction. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Ed Waldheim, friends of Jawbone. Ladies and gentlemen, you have just killed the goose that laid the golden egg. And I'm holding every single one of you responsible. We have losing six staff people from Mojave Unified School District. Six people are leaving town from Mojave Unified School District. The exodus is taking place. We've got two houses being built, one next to my house, one next, two next to my house. People are not coming here. We have created an environment that nobody wants to come here. And the only hope that we had to bring new businesses in here, as Lou Peralt has been saying for years, is the OHV. Yet you poo-pooed the idea. You guys, for some stupid reason, don't understand free money, you don't understand OHV, you probably don't even like OHV, cause that's what you're, that's a feeling that I get here. So, I feel, why am I even here? I might as well sell everything too. Cause this town does, this town doesn't welcome OHV. You allow them, you permit them, but you're not making the effort- You allow them, you permit them, but you're not making the effort to get it going. Eric and Karen, they did everything in their power to make it happen, to make the numbers happen. I'm even willing to put money into it, but no, you guys just have such an anti-OHV. And you think you're gonna build houses on the second, second community? I got news for you. There're gonna be no houses out there, not with 20,000 empty lots over here. So, congratulations, you've won the golden award for not bringing redevelopment or bringing new business to town. You won, you won the prize. So, you killed California City for sure. That's for sure.
Back and see us again, will you? Yes, sir. Or ma'am.
Rick Warren, okay, last time for tonight. You know, you got a beautiful playground over at the park and everything. Awesome. I like it. I've been over to the park several evenings, a lot of people are using it. We need to invest in our city for our public people that live here. But there's no benches for adults to sit on. And if you're like me, getting down on the ground's easy, getting up is a little hard. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought those got, those got removed when they did all the removal.
We're just gonna bring that back in the next budget.
Okay.
They're gonna be ordered.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mayor Wady speaking. That was one of my issues, what is going on with the park, where the benches, where the barbecue grills, besides the benches, but the picnic tables. There's a lot of things that were there that's gone, so my question is, is it coming back? Okay, 'cause it's down bare to the bone. I don't do sun very well. I have a tan. Outside of that, back to that question, the city being short on funds, that is a question. How is that so? Because I see the golf course, of course, I see the, the city park. Our residential streets are still needing to be either dug up and laid down new, or dug up, laid down new. And then I see around the city that there are construction, there is construction going on. I'm gonna take it as a lot of the construction is cannabis. Even if it isn't cannabis, there's construction going on and there are fees coming in. How much have we collected from those fees? You know, last year, you know, collected 2 million from cannabis, somewhere 2017, 2018. I'm expecting to see more, because if we got 2 million then, we're gonna get a little more now because of what, how long some of the, some of the cannabis businesses have been here and the ones that are coming in. Oh, Anna?
Hi.
Oh, oh, I should say, I wanted to ask Anna a question. When are we having our next meeting in regards to African-American employees being permanently hired?
We can talk offline and we'll schedule that.
Okay, 'cause I got some stuff, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Allen Bell, Cal City. OHV should be, could be, and we hope it will be, the lifeblood of our community. There's nobody who has as many names as the city does because they have everybody's names that bought a ticket to come ride in Cal City. Some people don't like it, I like it, but there's something we're, we're missing. And I think Ed said it best. We have to groom these people to come here. When was the last time the city sent out any notice, since they have the addresses, the emails, the money, to any of these OHVs saying, hey, we'd really like you to come here last month? We're having an event over in our park, we'd love to have you come here and do something with us. No, we don't do that. We go out and hassle them a little bit, and then, about eight years ago, I guess, there's 100,000 people out here for Thanksgiving. How many were here last Thanksgiving? You need to know. Has anybody taken account? You need to know what the hell's going on in our community. The mayor, he gets around. Dr. Nick gets around, but Anna's too busy to get around. She needs to go out and see what's really going on in the commi, in the community. And the parks, how many parks do we have? How many people know how many parks we have up on the bench up there? Do we, do you know we have a park out at Silver Saddle? It's eight acres. Do you know we have a park over in the mobile home park behind all the mobile homes? What's being done about it? Is it being cleaned up, taken care of?
It should have been, it's, it's already been cleaned up.
That's good. But the OHV people are the lifeblood of this community. We need to groom them.
Jeanie Olafland again. I wanna kind of piggyback on Mayor Protem Stump's comments about the budget. I have been reviewing the budget and I'm getting ready for the meetings the next couple of days. One of the things I would like to ask the council to do is to go back to the budget boxes. The budget boxes were the closest thing to zero-based budget, because that's where, when I was the finance director, that's where I held people accountable. If they tried to spend something that wasn't in their budget box, no can do. But when you just give them a number, you know, there's, there's not, it gives them too much flexibility to do whatever. And when you were asking about the priorities, I did speak with a couple of department heads and they said that they never had the opportunity to put in what they wanted in the budgets. They were handed, this is what you're gonna have. So, I, I would strongly recommend that you ask for the priorities, but also to go back to the budget boxes. And I know what a pain they are. I know, 450 pages. But it really, especially with the situation we're in now, it will help to hold people accountable if we have that level of detail.
Thank you.
Lou Peralta, California City. If I may ask the council to, not yet, start my time, please. I'll tell you why. Because I have to apologize. I have to apologize to you folks. And it's not part of what I want to discuss, so if you can bear, give me that extra time. I've been told that I was irreverent, manipulative, insulting, loud, well, I can believe that, abusive last Saturday to you folks. We were at the special meeting, and if I did sound that way to you guys, I sincerely apologize. I didn't think I did it, but several ladies have pointed out that I was just that kind of a person, very irreverent. Was I irreverent to you, Mr. Harris?
I don't know if you want me to answer this. You weren't irreverent to me, but when Jane Rieding walked up, you know, you got in her face very hard and was very intimidating to her, you know? And that wasn't called for.
Dr. Nick?
There's always give and take in the meetings.
I understand.
You don't have, you don't-
Regardless, I apologize. I didn't mean to be that way.
Apology accepted.
To the lady, I was talking and she just interrupted, but that's another story. What I'm here for, and if you can start my time now, you already did. I asked last meeting, and you said Chuck, or Mayor McGuire. Chuck's all right. That you will get back to me within 10 days, but I realized that, you know, your, your wife was, had a medical problem, so I know you- About the accounting for the OHV California City license. I said there hasn't been done any accounting whatsoever. Now, I am totally confused tonight, because I was informed by Ms. Sanders that she has been giving the city council accounting from day one specifically. Now, I was also, let me finish my train of thought, because I do forget things. I was also told by one of the persons in the city council that you had asked for, not you personally, I guess, but that, that accounting has been asked and somebody was told that to burn all the information, to get rid of it. I was told that just the other day. So, I don't know where I'm at. I honestly think that we, the people, as well as you, the city council, deserve a complete itemized and forensic accounting of the California City OHV license from day one.
Now, in reference to that, if you could get ahold of Anna, we've got all, we will show you what we've received from OHV, and that's the, the best I can give you for right now.
Okay. Well, my question then begs to be asked, I've seen some of the reports that came in, Mr. Olafland gave them to me a couple of years ago, but she, if I'm wrong, correct me, please, Jeanie, but you said, this is all I can give you because that's all we have. We haven't anything from the beginning, which to me is just incredible. From the beginning, I have only two emails from the Chief of Police telling me, we're gonna get this thing accounting done, but for now, so far, we have received 450,000, that was the first year. The second year was up to 750,000. That was back in 2008, 2009. I dare say that we have collected quite a bit of money since then. And even though there may be some accounting as recently as 2008, we still have a lot of time that hasn't been accounted for. And I am going to demand, as a citizen, as one that pays, by the way, a lot of those fees, and I bought the licenses, even though I didn't have to pay it because I'm a citizen of California City, I still paid it, 'cause I, I wanted to support it. But there's no accounting. So, if you're telling me, Mayor, today, tonight, or any one of you folks, that I can get the accounting from the city manager specifically for each year, how much money was taken in and where was spent, that's a forensic accounting, then I'll, I'll be a happy camper and I would apologize to you and to the chief and to Ms. Sanders and anybody else.
She will show you what we have received.
My question was, was it satisfying to you what you received?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Macedonio, California City. I thought I had one question, but I end up with three. Lou, did you just say that as a resident of California City, they don't pay the OHV fees?
Correct.
Okay, so, anybody that's a resident doesn't pay the OHV fee?
I think the, the file, the, the thing shows resident, law enforcement, fire, or military, I think is zero.
Okay, so the only people that are paying are our visitors. So, we really have to be nice to them because they're the only ones that are paying. My second question is Councilman Smith brought up a really good word tonight. It's called open-ended. And I would ask the council to consider moving forward, that if we're gonna control and we're really gonna look at the pennies and, and the small parts, that we don't approve anything that's open-ended, that you know exactly what the numbers are gonna be before you approve it. So, I'm wondering if you would consider that as policy? And my third question is the meeting before last, I asked about Granicus. That question didn't make it to the minutes. Last meeting, I asked about Granicus, and I asked the question more appropriately and it made it to the minutes. And it says, Karen Macedonio requests an update on Granicus.
We, we met with a company that will do the fiber force or the, the lines and the ceiling, and they're gonna bring a proposal back and do a tour with us, so it, it should be up and running. And once we bring it back to you guys for approval and the, the bids, then we can get it done pretty quick. I know it's taking a long time.
Do we have a timeline for at least getting the bid?
We don't yet, we won't until we have a proposal from her.
We, but we don't have a timeline for the proposal either.
She's coming next week.
Thank you.
And then we have two other ones, one from Code Three and then another company.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Allen Hudson. Got a few things here. First, we need to, the council needs to direct that the, that there, that there be water well extraction fees, extraction rates put in place for agricultural, industrial, and potable water for wells. The next item is on the police and fire overtime. If you calculate how much police and fire would be paying at the, the regular rates, full staff, and compare that to the total overtime that they're being charged, I believe that you will find it less. So, we have to fill those positions one way or another, through overtime or through complete staffing. The next item, this is for Councilman Stump. You need to direct that a budget calendar be put in place. A budget calendar is a basic accounting where you send all of that out to your department heads and they fill out their wish list, and then it's refined and refined until it's brought within the tolerances of their budgets. The next item is what I, is I've sent each one of you, it's called the MDNA, it's Management Discussion and Analysis. Example for the city of Denver, the city of Denver, Colorado, they are the premier municipal accounting firm or, or department. It's referenced in many of the premier textbooks. And the reason I sent that to you, so you wouldn't have to sit through these laborious, boring budget workshops, looking at every nickel and dime. You'll fly high, you'll have a verbal picture of the, of the budget.
Good report.
The next item is we need to, I didn't see funding for a water rate study in the budget. I did not see funding for the state controller in the budget. The budget needs to be amended to have, to put those items in there. Now, do you have any questions on that MDNA that I sent each one of you? Do you agree that there should be a bud, a budget calendar? And that, that budget calendar should start now for next year? That is it, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening again, DJ Tuig, representing mycalcity.org. Real briefly, with respect to the comments about the parcel tax, I'm disappointed with the action, but I do appreciate the debate. I do appreciate the, the comments that were made. I listen very carefully and I see, you know, some ownership in terms of reducing the parcel tax. I do want to also make comment on the water standby fee. I think it's a relatively good decision. I'm a property owner in town with many properties and I'm happy to pay a water standby fee in town. When they're properties that are not in town, I think that's the appropriate action that was taken tonight. I want to speak about the lack of government controls with respect to excessive overtime in the past. It's not good enough to say, it's just gonna get better. We have to actually put that in the goals for the city manager. Maybe you've done that. I don't know if you have, but I think that, I heard something said about last meeting, no, no more overtime. What are the actual goals for the city manager coming forward? Do we have a metrics from year to year that we should be following to reduce the parcel tax? Do we have a metrics that will show economic development in the city? Or we actually generate general tax base? Are we measuring that month to month, year to year? What are the goals to improve accountability from the department heads to meet their priorities? What are the goals to establish a new vision in California City so that we can be more attractive as a city? Do we have goals to rebrand the community? These are the things that are on our mind. We'd love to hear some response when time is appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Great in California City. In regards to the budget workshop tomorrow and Thursday, will there be a link to the new public safety budgets available prior to, or will we be, will we be surprised when we get here?
Surprise.
Right now, the current document that we will be working with tomorrow is online. Any changes-
Yeah, I've got that.
Any changes that we make going forward will be accessible on the website.
Can you, any chance you can separate just public safety onto a new link? 'Cause I've got an enormous amount of bookmarks on my, on my PDF. It's, it takes time to put them all in. You're only, all you gotta do is scan it in the pages.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, I can't say too much, being a city employee, but I just want to give the public hope. Anna Lynn is doing an awesome job as an interim city manager in getting items in order. She has heard you, she understands, and she has been doing her best to get these things in order. All these things you've requested, all these items you've talked about. So there is hope. It is coming.
Catherine Everett, California City. Just one comment. I want to make sure that I heard what I heard. We are going to give back almost $75,000 instead of spending $11,000. I don't quite understand that. And yet, I have heard Mr. Tuig, I have heard everybody on the council, I have heard everybody on staff saying, what we need to do is to get more business to come into town. Well, we have the cannabis business. We could open up four or five shops that are retail. We probably could dump another $200,000 a month if we did that into the city, just in sales tax. But we don't want to service the people that are using our city, spending money in this city. We don't want to give them a place to go and get information on the city, but they are invited to come and visit the city and spend their money. What's wrong with that picture? When are we gonna learn to say yes and stop saying no to everything that brings money into this city? I don't get it, gentlemen. I'm sorry. And I feel, I feel like, you know, 35, 40, 50 years I've ridden this desert. In 2008, I sat, I sat with the chief of police at the time, Linda Lunsford, and decided on the fees for people, motorcycle people to ride on our streets out in the second community. And I could see that developing into much, much, much more. But we had, we had the Friends of Jawbone say they'd give it, they'd give the city the $11,000. Wouldn't it be better to take his $11,000 than to give back almost $75,000? That's gotta be added into the budget. And I don't know where it's gonna come from. I hope it's not gonna come from police and fire because we've already cut them back and we're said to the citizens of this town, well, you've enjoyed a little bit of police protection and now we're gonna take that away too? We need to think about what we're doing, gentlemen. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Seeing none. Council agenda, this portion of the meeting is reserved for the council members to present information, announcements, and items that have come to their attention. The Brown Act precludes council staff or public discussion. Short staff responses are appropriate. The council will take no formal action. A council member may request the city clerk to calendar an item or consideration at a future meeting or refer an item to staff. Starting with A B 1, 2, 3, 4. Councilman Smith, do you have any of that? And I don't think-
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have any? Do you? Do you? I don't either. Okay, Councilman Smith, do you have anything to say for this evening?
Well, first, Mr. Mayor, I think there's been some confusion. We never voted, we never voted to deny C B 1 for the visitor center. It was pulled when questions were asked. So I think the public has the wrong idea. Questions were just simply being asked for us to formulate a good decision. That's my understanding. Am I correct in that, sir?
We were thinking, yes, that is. Yes, it was. That's, they pulled it. We were asking questions and it got pulled.
Yeah, I don't, you can't blame us for asking questions, but I would like to state this if I could. I want to first, I want to thank the citizens who have encouraged me before my appointment, which wasn't much time to even prepare for that. After my appointment, I want to thank council members, Lasinovich, Paris, and Mayor Protam Stump for entrusting me with Tammy Johnson's seat. And I want to thank you, Mayor McGuire, and I want to thank Tammy Johnson for your advice, even though I wasn't your choice. But I want to thank you for showing the utmost respect to me and helping to prepare me for this meeting. And I want to thank Tammy Johnson for trying to help to prepare me for this meeting with her advice. I want to thank our city manager. It's much different sitting, it definitely is much different sitting here in a police station in Plano, Texas than it is sitting, uh, sitting in the audience as a citizen. But I want to thank Mrs. Lynn for doing everything she possibly could to give me as much information as she could to prepare me for this meeting. And seeing how things run, I was gonna say, on this side of the dais, but 1,400 miles this side of the dais, I have been very impressed. Immediately after my appointment, I went down to Ace to grab a nice cold Diet Mountain Dew and I, within three minutes of stepping in there, my respect, council member or mayor who has ever served in the city, went up exponentially as I was confronted with an issue on a water meter. I can't, my respect has grown tremendously. I have to also thank the other citizens, and I see at least two of them in this room right now, for going through the interview process with me. I am humbled that I've been given this incredible responsibility. My decision-making is not based on my opinion. My decision-making is gonna be based not on tomorrow, but on four years. And to prepare for what's gonna happen in four years, if the projections do not occur, what many believe are going to occur. And, um, I want to thank my fellow council members for being patient with me and thank you for being patient with me as I have met this way. This was a family reunion scheduled over six months ago. And for you that are grandparents, both of my grandsons were here. I think you can understand that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lasinovich. Councilman Paris. Mayor Protam Stump.
Um, we learned a lot tonight as far as the O H V facility. As Public Works Director, interim Public Works Director, Beargan pointed out, we didn't know about the STUCO. And those are all kinds of details like that. We really need to know, not just on that project, but on any project that we bring, like the example of the work that's gonna be done out here. We need to do that so that the city manager can present to, and the finance director can present to the council, a budget that really reflects everything. And that's difficult to do sometimes. You know, um, the example of the Toyota, that's easy because we know that the battery, if we go to the dealership, it's $3,500 and $500 installation. But not everything is that clear and cut like that, so, you know, it can make it easy for us. We have to really do our due diligence when we look at any type of spending. And that brings me back to the thing that I keep harping on, and that is, and I know the chief is probably getting tired of me here saying this, and so is Mr. Ibanez, but we really need to have a priority list from each director on what their spending is. And I mean from one all the way down. You cannot, and if I would have been king for a day, what I would have done is I wouldn't have announced any amount of money. I would have said, give me your priorities and how much they're gonna cost and then we will talk about, and Councilman Smith has to go, so I understand if you have to go, Councilman Smith, if you can hear me.
I'm here.
Okay. But we have to have that list of priorities. It is essential for us to have that on doing a budget. And we really need everybody who's submitted their, you can't just go and come up with a budget and, and, and a bunch of, have a bog sat. And a bog sat is a bunch of guys sitting around a table or a bunch of gals sitting around a table. Can't have a bog sat and come up with a budget. You have to give those directors, again, you have to get those priorities. And so I'm harping on this over and over and over because that is what we need to have a real budget. You know, when it comes down to cutting and... Yes, I understand. They want to go home. So anyway, please get us that list of priorities from the directors. We need it as soon as possible. And if you get it, just email one of them to us, the next one. We need them as soon as possible because it really doesn't make any sense to go through the budget without that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything. I want to thank everybody who attended tonight and for Saturday for attendance. It's been incredible. Looking for a motion?
Make that motion.
First and second, first by Paris, second by Lasinovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Well, have fun staying here, Jean.